So what do you guys want to talk about before the meeting starts? Anything? Nothing? You guys want to talk about?
Or any of you Eagle Scouts?
Nobody was in the use.
I think it's Jim McDonald or that.
Shannon, there's a charger.
Oh.
Funny thing. Maybe that's the right. That one? Yeah, it's that is starting early. Anybody else?
No, that's a good.
Good for you. It's morning.
I think this is for.
It is.
I'm on a total oxygen diet.
Joe, does this fit yours?
No more than anti-oxygen.
Do you want to put it face down for you or not?
Mitchell?
I shouldn't be texting.
You can switch off, Joe. You can switch off.
You moved it there.
I got one.
I think Lori's sitting in my seat.
Yeah, she is. I feel that she can go sit over there.
How can they see? Where do they? Are we on the screen on the side?
They have it in front of them. See that? They all have the TV and.
What about the audience?
I guess on the audience too. I'm not sure.
I can hear whoever's talking. Does she know that?
Hi, Joe.
I have Mitch's like eyes.
What do you think so? Right? Like two and a half minutes? If the set of rules.
All right, Mr. Mayor, it's 6:00 PM and we are live. We're streaming on YouTube and VR website and we're ready to go.
Okay, I'll call the meeting. Call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, will you call the role of the members, please?
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Del Prado.
Here.
Councilmember Hokumer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Craft.
Here.
Mayor Coradino.
I'm here.
For Miss President, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This is our regular meeting of Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And thank you all for being here and thank you for everybody at home that's watching. This is our first meeting with live people in front of us since I think probably March or February of 2020. So it's good to see yours. Well, I can't see your smiling faces, but it's good to see your smiling eyes beneath your masks and thank you. Let's get up and do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll get our meeting start. Pledge allegiance to the project of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation, one liberty, and the principle of justice for all. Okay. So let's get started with our consent agenda. We have on the consent agenda, just just one tab, right?
Yes, just the one.
One tab, the meeting minutes. Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody want to speak on the meeting minutes from the public? See none? We won't. You got a motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great. So the content's done, meeting resolutions, agenda order of business, no special presentations. We have a couple of items on the agenda tonight that I think everybody would want to move forward. We're gonna, let's put items five and six. Mr. Clerk, which one should we take first? Five or six? What's the most in tabs, five or six? Let's move that first and we'll do tab two and three after we're done those. Is there a preference?
Mr. Mayor, 8A, which is your tab five, is the main resolution. The other one on tab six is an amendment to the resolution you adopted last month.
Okay. Okay, so let's do, let's do tab five. We'll do that right now. Do you want to read that in and then we'll all start the process?
Yes, sir. That's a resolution of the Village of Pinecrest, Florida relating to the creation of a special assessment area for the potable water improvement project. Modifying the initial assessment resolution as provided herein, establishing the maximum rate of the special assessment for each benefited tax parcel and providing for the levy of the special assessments against the benefited tax parcels, approving the preliminary assessment rule, establishing method of collection, establishing other terms and conditions of the special assessment and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Yosi, do we have any type of staff report that you want to give leading into this?
I wasn't planning on it, Mayor, but I can if you'd like. And I also just wanted to remind you about Commissioner Regalado. I don't know if she's attending virtually. If you wanted to bring her into the meeting as well.
Yeah, let me do that. Let me, let me quickly frame the issue and then is, Kito, do you know Commissioner Regalado is with us tonight?
I believe she's, she is, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. So what I want to do, all right, so obviously everybody knows why we're here and so we'll be brief. This is, this is an issue about resolving the need for county water in Pinecrest. We have a proposal on the table and the proposal is that the village would contribute $7 million. The county would contribute half a million dollars and the 700 plus or minus affected homeowners would contribute basically around a dollar a day. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to hear from Commissioner Regalado because she's here to speak with some of her staff. We will then see if there's any debate or discussion amongst the council before we move forward. We'll open it up to the public for public comments. We'll give, just try to keep in mind that we've got plenty of folks and, you know, we're going to let everybody have their say, say whatever you need to say. Try to keep it to a reasonable amount of time, a couple of minutes, couple and a half minutes, but you know, you know, do your, do your job. Just remember to be respectful of everybody. That's the only thing that that we hold dear to us here. Want to make sure that we have a nice vigorous but collegial debate about the issue. After we close, the public will start with the people that are present in the room and then the folks that are downstairs will come up and they will, they will give their comments. Then, once everybody that that took their time to come to the village hall, give the, give their comments is done, then we'll go to the folks that are attending virtually. We'll do those comments when we, when everybody's had the opportunity to speak, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. We will then debate amongst the council. Somebody will eventually make a motion. It'll be seconded and then we'll vote on that motion and we'll have a positive or negative impact one way or the other. Okay, so with that, let's, let's see if Commissioner Regalado is here and if she would like to speak, we would love to have her do that.
Commissioner, is that you, District Seven?
No, this is not the Commissioner. Give me just one second. Let me try to locate her.
Okay, so she does not appear to be on just yet, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, she's coming. We'll give her a couple of seconds to get started. Would anybody, before she goes, would you, anything that anybody in the council wants to say before we get into the public comment or hear the Commissioner? All right, so we'll wait for the Commissioner. I would like to hear what she has to say first because I think it's important to.
Okay, I believe she's on now, Mr. Clerk.
Okay.
Wait, you can only see the top of my head. There you go. Now you can see me.
All right, welcome, Commissioner.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you all for allowing us to be on. I actually bought, brought a few folks from Miami-Dade County that are going to speak to some issues because I've had the opportunity to speak to your mayor, but I wanted to speak to the full board about some of the communications that we've been getting and some of the misconceptions that we wanted to clear up. So first and foremost, I really want to thank you all for taking this on. As you all know, this has been an issue for over 40 years and it's been very polemic and I think that choosing to use these funds for an infrastructure project is the right thing. And we're actually going to have the former interim director, the current deputy director from WASD, Jose Enrique Cueto, on to talk about kind of our perspective from WASD. We've been very concerned about the wells and about contamination for the wells. As you know, there is no inspection of the wells. And I sent you all some information earlier today about the 33 wells that are contaminated in Pinecrest and are concerned about everything from fertilizer to saltwater intrusion in these wells. It's also important to note that connecting to Miami-Dade Water and Sewer will not eliminate these wells. There's plenty of people who have kept their wells. They can use them for agricultural purposes. And that's something that is well within, you know, their right, but it also impacts fire safety. It's also a public safety issue and we've asked the fire chief, he's on here too, he's going to speak after WASD regarding the fire safety issue and how having access to water for the entire city of Pinecrest is actually going to lower some of these property owners' insurance because they pay more for their fire insurance because they don't have direct access to water and that's been a concern for several years. So I'll come back and kind of recap what we're doing. As some of you may already know, Miami-Dade County is going to put in half a million dollars from its GOBON program. I'm actually working to get more funding, so I'll keep you all abreast of that. And then we would be taking over the infrastructure and managing it for the village, but I wanted you to hear directly from Jose Enrique. And then we also have someone from the Florida Department of Health that's going to speak to the well contamination and some of our concerns in terms of water. As I have mentioned to you all before, this concept of one water is not new, but it's a concept that we really need to get honest about. It is one system, right? So it's not just about the one user. It's about that the impact of users have on our entire water system. That gets us into septic sewer, which is a conversation for another day, but I'm happy to update you all on what we're doing at the county in terms of that. But with that, with no further ado, here is our deputy director of water and sewer. He can speak to our water treatment, our water quality and some of the misconceptions that you've heard regarding the same.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, councilmembers. Jose Cueto, interim director at the Miami-Dade Water and Sewer Department. As the Commissioner indicated, we just wanted to say brief remarks regarding our utility services and the water that the department provides to all the residents that are, that are connected to the distribution system within the county. Miami-Dade Water and Sewer Department, like all other utilities in the state, are regulated at a tremendously high level. Our water is tested regularly both at the treatment facility and throughout the distribution system to ensure quality with relation to all human health parameters, bacteriological criteria, taste and odor and many other parameters to ensure that the water is of the highest quality possible. Our department provides uninterrupted service to all of our customers and frankly, our rates are among the lowest, not only in the state of Florida, but also nationally. Most of the residents in the city of Pinecrest and the Village of Pinecrest are not on sewer, so the average water bill would be on the order of $15 to $30 a month. So it's highly affordable, high-quality drinking water. We have our colleagues here from the Florida Department of Health, the director of the Florida Department of Health in Miami-Dade County who can speak towards the human health impacts and benefits of public drinking water supply. But we just wanted to share with you, councilmembers, and with the public, the benefits and the quality of the service that the county provides through its Water and Sewer Department. And here to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
I actually do. It's on behalf of a resident who had a question for WASD and that is, say you have a street that has five houses on it and you put the line down the street and three of the houses choose not to hook up immediately and to do, can you speak to the water quality and the pressure that goes into the two houses that that choose to do it and is it compromised because the other three houses did not?
The short answer, Councilwoman, is that there is no impact to those, to those homeowners as a result of those neighbors not making an immediate connection. Our system is interconnected throughout the county and as a result, all homeowners receive a consistent level of service with, with relation to pressure and water supply. So the service that that homeowner would receive on that block is similar to the homeowner on the farthest extent of the, of the Village of Pinecrest. So there would not be a noticeable impact of any kind as a result of those neighbors connecting or, and or not connecting to the system.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Sometimes we get complaints about, or we've heard talk about cloudy water. Can you explain what that is and if it's a normal occurrence or an unusual occurrence?
Sure. The, the water provided by, by the Water and Sewer Department is regulated to be within a certain level of turbidity. It's a, one NTU is the limit specified within state law. The department is well below that limit and as a result, the water is typically crystal clear. There's absolutely no cloudiness or any other visible color in the water. It's among the clearest water actually in the state. I don't know if some, some folks may have been to Orlando or other places where the water may not be as aesthetically pleasing in terms of color and taste. However, on occasion, and I think the fire chief can speak to this, when there is flushing of hydrants, when there is work on the water distribution system, that flushing could cause calcium carbonate essentially scale to break, to break loose from, from the coating of the pipelines and create cloudiness in the water. That cloudiness is temporary and also doesn't pose any human health impacts. It's essentially minerals within the water that, that have been suspended and over time, as water is used over a course of a few minutes, it clears out and, and goes away. So we have a section dedicated to cloudy water within our website because oftentimes customers ask that question, why is my water cloudy? And they oftentimes find that it's, it's temporary in nature, intermittent, and as a result of some activity, oftentimes hydrant flushing undertaken by the county or the local fire department.
Thank you. Is there anybody that can speak to the safety and security of the groundwater system?
Are, we can speak briefly towards the county's policies with relation to wellfield protection. Unfortunately, we don't have our colleagues from Durham, from RER Durham here, who are of course responsible for wellfield protection, but what I could say at a, at a high level is that the county through its environmental code has established vast expanses of the county which are within what's called wellfield protection areas. What those areas are intended to do is limit land uses within those areas to uses that will not have an impact to the groundwater. That will be protective of the groundwater that we all use and is treated at our facilities before distribution to the public. Typical land uses that are prohibited within wellfield protection areas consist of dry cleaners, heavy industrial, a number of other uses that, that typically will be allowed outside of these areas. Of course, within those areas, a number of uses must be connected to sewer to avoid contamination of our water supply. And as a result of that policy and the active monitoring efforts by Durham and our regulatory partners, we have a high level of confidence at the county and I know that the Department of Health shares this confidence in the quality and the safety of our public water supply.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? Great. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Really, really quickly, if I can chime in on something, there will still be restrictions because as Jose Enrique mentioned, the folks that have the wells also have the septic tanks. So back to this idea of one water, right? One of the benefits of being connected to Miami-Dade County water and septic is that we clean the water, right? So we're not that concerned about what you're doing around where we collect that water. That's not the case when we have septic tanks because there is no filtration system and we know that that can go directly from the septic tank into our aquifer, right? If it leaks out of the septic tank. So there will be more uses, you know, once we get rid of the septic tank, but we're still concerned about the uses in or around septic tanks because they could impact water. That's another reason why the wells are concerning. We just passed our fertilizer ordinance and that's going to limit, you know, some of the issues that, that we've had historically with wells. But unfortunately, because this is how our water system works, whatever you're pouring into your backyard is probably going straight into your well, right? And that's, that's one of the issues that we've had in the areas that have had contamination. But Jose Enrique, I think we have someone from Department of State here to talk about the contaminated wells and kind of the, the, the Florida Department of Health is concerned with these. If you can please introduce them, that would be great.
Of course, our pleasure, Commissioner Regalado. We have the pleasure of having the director of the, of the Florida Department of Health in Miami-Dade County here with us, Dr. Samir Elmir. Samir, thank you for joining.
Thank you also. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, everybody, for inviting the Health Department for this, for this town hall meeting. Basically, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Basically, just I want to make a small correction. I'm not the director of the Health Department. I am a director of the Environmental Health and Engineering Services. It's a division within the Florida Department of Health in Miami-Dade County. Actually, the director of the Health Department is a doctor, Dr. Diaw. So having said that, I think, you know, the role we play, that the role we play in this process, I want everybody to understand that the Health Department or there is no state or local agency that regulate private drinking water wells in the state of Florida, including Miami-Dade County. The way we get incorporated into the process, we are like subcontractors for, for the Department of Environmental Protection, basically to investigate contaminated, yeah, potentially or suspected contaminated private drinking water wells in Miami-Dade County. We've been working in your area for many, many, many years and we have a lot of data to support that, you know, many private drinking water wells in Pinecrest area is very contaminated with many volatile organic compounds with the gildrin, which is an insecticide or a pesticide that was used for agricultural use. Many years ago, it was banned for use in 1974 by EPA, except for the use for treating for mild in soil, but it was banned completely in 1987 by EPA. So we still find, it's all over the place. You find it when you test for it in soil and in water. And also we found pockets of arsenic contamination in some wells in Pinecrest area. So it's very important that if you have a access to approve, an approved public water system, like Miami-Dade County Public Water Drinking Water System, it's an approved system. They test the water quality hundreds of times every day and they report the data before the Department of Health and the, for the Department of Environmental Protection. They test it for the primary drinking water standards and for the secondary drinking water standards. And I'm proud to tell you that at more, always, almost always, that the water quality that we get from Miami-Dade County, it meets all federal and state drinking water standards. And if in case at one, at any point, they exceed, they exceed any standard, they have to go for mitigation program. They have to go on public notice and everybody will, will know about it. They monitor for bacteria, they monitor for chemicals, organics, organics, and that's daily. They, they monitor for physical water quality. So using approved public water system, it's much safer than using a private drinking water. You know, water is food, basically, especially we live in subtropical environment in Miami-Dade County or in South Florida, we drink a lot of water because of the weather. And, and, you know, drinking water wells, they're not monitored, they're not regulated. So if you do not test it regularly, you will run the risk of a drinking water that is contaminated. So you need to test it for at least once a year for bacteria, for nitrates, especially you have still septic tanks in your area. You need to test it for, because we've been finding certain pockets of gildrin contamination of arsenic contamination, not only in Pinecrest, but in, but in other areas in South Florida. So I think if you have access and, and to connect to public water system, like the county water system, I think it's the safer public health approach to, to basically to apply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I think we got a recent report that shows that at least 30 wells are known contaminated. These are the only ones that people are, are testing, right? And there's many, many others that, that haven't been tested, so people just don't simply know. So that's, that's a fact. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yes, so thank, and thank you for, for pointing that out. I think it's important for everyone to know that we test the water every day and that this is something that is part of our procedure, right? So if you want to take a field trip, Jose Enrique and I would be happy to have you at our water testing facility. It's also in District Seven. We're actually going to be expanding it. It's going to grow to twice its size and one of the reasons is for the educational component because we want students to come and see how we test water. And obviously Miami-Dade County is growing and we want to be able to test as much water as fast as possible. So we're already preparing, you know, for population growth and a greater need in terms of water testing. Like one, like doctor was mentioning, we test for all sorts of things way beyond what the requirements are and a lot more than private testing. So we're, we're happy to have you all out to our water treatment facility. You can see exactly how we test our water, how often we test our water and the systems that regulate our water. That being said, it's very important to mention that we are going to be providing an opt-out provision for residents that do not want to participate in this project. You know, as you guys know, there's a 10-year that exists with Durham. It's going to have the same triggers as it does now. If you do a certain percentage of renovations or if the property is sold, then you lose that opt-out, but that's another thing that we're negotiating with the village to make sure that we give everyone an opportunity. We would love to service you with Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer, but we want everyone to know that, you know, it, it is, it is a process and they can choose to do so later on. So with that, if I could have, we have our fire chief that's on and he can speak to the public safety issue. As many of you know, this has been another concern in Pinecrest and it also impacts, much like the one water issue, it impacts the neighbors and, and he's going to speak to how important this would be for fire safety. Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members, Village of Pinecrest and Honorable Miami-Dade County Commissioner and Co., Regalado. Chief Kaminsky with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. I'm here tonight regarding the potable water improvement agenda items and to address any questions you may have regarding NDFR's ability to respond to fires in the village. Currently, NDFR has the capability to effectively respond to fire incidents in the village. Within one and a half miles of the village, NDFR has four suppression units, Station 23, Station 62, Station 4, and Station 14. Each house is an advanced life support engine with 750-gallon water tank capacities. Further, all NDFR suppression units have the capability to draft from static water sources such as swimming pools, lakes, canals, and wells. This has allowed NDFR to effectively mitigate fires within the village. If needed, NDFR can augment these resources by also dispatching 2,000-gallon water takers if needed. The addition of 191 fire hydrants to the area between 57th Avenue and 67th Avenue and Candlewood 136 Street would definitely provide NDFR additional fire suppression resources and mitigating fire incidents that occur within this area. It's always easier for us to have a secured water supply in a location in lieu of bringing it into that location. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
Great. Any questions? Doug, you got anything? You're the, the fire expert. Nope. Got it. I'm not the fire expert, but I would tell you that more fire hydrants probably is good. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, I think it was quite clear.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. No questions from, from us here. Commissioner, anything else? You're muted.
Thank you. As I know, that, that's about it. If you all don't have any other questions, we're happy to partner with you on this. We're glad to see the project move forward. I thank you for your political courage and taking this step forward. I think it's important for our environment, for our residents and, and for our overall public safeties. So thank you all.
Joe, I have one question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Doug.
I just wanted to ask the Commissioner about the, the moratorium is 10 years. But remember, that was because the county's general obligation bond money was put to use. So what are the chances of that getting, for instance, somebody's 70 years old and they want to live there for the rest of their life? Maybe to 99, that's 30 years. Maybe to ninety-nine, that's thirty years, and they want to live with their well water. Now that's different because remember back in the general obligation bond, that was from the county's money. This is our money. So we're putting in our money. What are the chances of the county commission saying, well, it's your money. So as soon as, until the house is sold or the level of rebuild is met, they're able to be on well water?
Well, the county is putting in half a million dollars and we're actually taking over the maintenance and the service of it. So since we have half a million dollars from the bond program, we have requested from our legal department the ability to have an opt-out that is the life of, of the agreement, right? Which would be twenty years. So we're right now trying to see if they will allow us twenty years. That's probably the furthest we could go, but we are doing our best. Your mayor did mention that, that some folks would want more than ten years. So we are working on that.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate your efforts on that. We got, we know Mayor Lerner worked hard to get to ten years and we've got that. So anybody that needs to, anybody that gets water in front of their house now has ten. And we're working closely with the Commissioner if we, to see if we can get any more. And she's been great thus far. So we're, we're hoping to have positive. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for being here. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You all did wonderful.
Thank you for all for participating. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to, if there's no, no further questions, we'll open the public hearing. And so we'll start with the folks in the room. Just get up, state your name and address. We'll talk about two, two and a half minutes. And we're here to listen. So who wants to go first? All right, get up and go. Well. You.
First of all, thank you.
You're welcome. Can you give your name? Can you give your name and address? Name and address. So. Okay, good. Perfect. Thanks. Oh, thank you.
Mayor and councilpeople. My name is Doris Masfranchello. I have Joseph. We have lived in Pinecrest before it was incorporated. So we're talking forty-eight years. We have had a well water for forty-eight years. We've had no problems with our well water. So you're going to ask me, oh, is that well water? I'm going to say it's good, but we also have a softener and we like it very much. Now, let me continue on here. There was something that you, Joe, put in a paper two years ago. And I'll read it to everybody. I'm sure you can hear it. The people have spoken. We are the people. We have spoken. We did not like this. It was voted down. But once again, back here on a water issue, and a lot of us don't like it. Now, how did this get defeated? It got defeated because the people had a vote. There was a referendum. The people spoke. And now we need to speak again. The people need to speak again. So continuing on, I would like to ask, how many people in here are on well water? Let me see your hands. How many people are on county water? One or two. Okay. Now let me ask you this. How many people who are on well water or county water buy bottled water? Okay, there we go. And I did a little research, Mayor Joe, and I went to two supermarkets, okay? I went to Mylum's and I spoke to Ben Greenberg. I went to Publix, the big one in Dade Land, and spoke to Ryan Aitken, who is store manager. These are not underlings now. These are the guys that run the store. In Publix's Dade Land store, they sell from five to six pallets a day of water, seven trucks a week. In Mylum's, the manager, Ben Greenberg, also up there, sells four trucks per week. The two and a half gallon is the most popular and the twenty-four packs are popular. Now, I ask you, why isn't there selling so much bottled water? What is it about our wonderful county water that you want to push down our neck? If it's so good, why aren't we buying bottled water? We're paying twice. First, you pay to Dade County Water and Sewer, and then you pay to Publix and Winn-Dixie and Mylum's and whomever. So does that make sense? It doesn't make sense. What are you trading one for the other? Because most of the people with those kinds of numbers are not drinking Dade County water. They're drinking bottled water. So why saddle us with this kind of debt when you're already paying? Paying twice. Now, let's talk a little bit about the county water. I have in my possession, which I will show you, four papers. Dade County water loaded with hazardous chemicals. I'm going to pass them around to everybody. Dade, among the five most problemless. Ammonia added to water cautiously. Cancer fight could boost water rates. We all know that. So now I'm going to pass these around so that you can see that. First, I'm going to pass them to the.
Thank you. Just give them to Katie. She'll review them and thank you.
What we say in these articles is your county water that you think is so wonderful is loaded with cancerous stuff. No baloney, facts. Cryo-methanes, cancer-causing stuff. Chlorophyll appears in drinking water and that's after it's tested. Chloramides, which is chlorine and ammonia, chlorine and fluorides. Direct quote in the paper, "may not be safe to drink." Quote, two thousand and seven, Pinecrest paper. Then of course, there's always the case of the rusty water and the boiled water and it's not this and it's not that. So I ask you, why do you want county water? If you were to take a survey, which think about this, this is a smart move on your part. Take a survey of all the people and say, how much water do you drink from Dade County versus bottled water? Because that's what you're doing. You want to see the Dade County water being drunk and it's not.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And the anthem story is this. I think everybody should take a breath, breathe hard. Give us a six-week extension. No, no decision to be made this evening. We need to have a lot more dwelling in this and see are there some alternates? What can we do? This is too fast and it reminds me of exactly what happened in twenty nineteen. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming here. We appreciate it. Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Crockett, six oh five five Southwest Ninety-second Street. I read about this proposal on the website, the FAQ. I, I think it's fantastic. So much work went into it. I think, I think it's very just and judicious that we're using this windfall from the federal government for this way to provide water that is safer, cleaner, easier, and in a time when it's not an emergency, when there's not saltwater intrusion or deaths from, from contaminated water. I don't think there's any problems with all the people that are on city water, county water, including what, eighty percent of Pinecrest?
Right.
We all know if this were not a relic of the days when Pinecrest was farms and agriculture, all the new homes in the last fifty years have required city water. And that's what we want. I have, we have a well. We're tired of dealing with, you know, coligan and the salt and this and that and breaking down and it doesn't work when electricity comes on. So anyway, this, this I think is fantastic. We've had many workshops. The majority of people who are on wells do not want to be on wells. The rest have voted against it. I understand that. The city did speak. The people that have city water, they already paid their developers for, didn't want to pay for us to have, to have city water. That's fine. They're not. So that's, so that's, that's great. But the majority of people that have wells would be very happy to have test city water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Who wants to go next? Yes, sir. Welcome, welcome aboard.
Hi, Corey Berman, one zero seven zero one Southwest Seventy-third Avenue. I'd like to echo those sentiments. I just moved here December. I'm a Pompano Bay kid.
Welcome, welcome to Pine, welcome to Pinecrest. We won't hold against you too much.
I appreciate it. It was technically incorporated both times when I was born, but I'm here. My dad's actually here too.
Cool.
I have two young kids. We're looking to do an addition to the house. And in the process of that, we learned about the fact that we'd like to have to connect to city water. It's just a box, my property. My neighbor's on it. The main goes right there. The cost approximately was three hundred square foot at a hundred and twenty feet. That's thirty-six thousand dollars just to extend the main. Now, in my humble opinion, that's really the job of government. It's a government service to have drinking water for everybody. No one should put the, put the bill for that. And that creates a collective action problem. Nobody wants to foot the bill for that. This to me is very equitable. And as the gentleman before me said, it was pretty much a windfall from the federal government and it's very equitable going forward. As, as he mentioned, there are problems with well water that I learned the hard way. My very first night, we were giving my daughter a bath and we could not turn off the bathtub. I thought I was going to flood the house. I did not really realize I was on well, couldn't figure out the main. I had a frantic call to my dad. I, my line, my father-in-law on a Zoom call who said, I don't see any water. That was very hectic. So that's something I learned. The cartridge was bad. Basically, it's twenty twenty-one. We shouldn't be on well water anymore. And to me, this raises the property values. Everyone in the village, we're not going to have issues where someone's on well water and that depresses the value of the home. You're not going to have people hesitant to do additions that they want to do that also raises the value of people's homes because it's cost prohibitive to extend the main, especially people around corners. And basically, my point is this, we shouldn't have to worry. I shouldn't have to worry on the kid, you know, bathing in water like this or going in the pool or drinking water. As the man mentioned before me, when the power goes out, which is my house has surges randomly in the middle of the day on a sunny day. You're not going to have water, particularly so during a hurricane. No, I followed the process. My neighbors got together, actually coincidentally, a few months, a few days before this proposal came out, talking about doing very similar thing amongst ourselves. But again, that really is not the job of four people. That should be the job of the government. And in following this process, I haven't heard of any real alternative projects. This is, you know, sort of a once in a lifetime opportunity with funds that came out of nowhere for very limited purposes and have to be done by a very specific point in time. And as far as I understand, you, you bid this out, the bid's going to expire, it's shovel-ready. We could start actually within a few months. And I think really that's the way to go. So we're at the finish line of this. I understand sewer is also another big thing. Let's finish this and then we'll move on to sewer and figure out a way to do that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here and welcome to Pinecrest. We value you, you being here. Who, anybody want to go? Mr. Kyle, you would like to?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name's Lance Kyle. My address is seven four seven five Southwest one oh two Street. I grew up in Pinecrest, part-time resident of Pinecrest. Let me start with saying, three weeks ago, village government sent out its first notices to the seven hundred or so homeowners who are going to be affected by the special assessment tax to help pay for the extension of the county water pipeline into their neighborhoods. Tonight, the council is going to vote on the first reading of a resolution that would legitimize the special assessment tax district, even though some of these homeowners haven't even seen the April twentieth notice yet. Why, I ask, is the council trying to fast-track this project before affected taxpayers can discuss and digest it? Aren't the federal ARP funds that will help subsidize this project available until twenty twenty-four? And aren't there numerous contractors in Dade County that can do this pipeline work? What's the rush? Don't taxpayers deserve to be heard on this important issue? If you're not going to have a referendum this time, shouldn't you at least have a survey? Here are some numbers. There are approximately thirteen hundred Pinecrest homes without county water connections comprised of two groups, those with water mains and those without. The six hundred with current access to water mains definitely don't want county water. While most of the seven hundred without water mains in this proposed special investment district or assessment district don't want it either, according to my polling. Most of these homeowners are satisfied with their well water and don't see any value in county water. They like being independent of the utilities or they're on fixed income. Many have generators, rain catchment systems or solar panels. They know the public and private utilities can be undependable, no matter what this guy on the screen said earlier. And they've heard the stories from their neighbors about the Miami Dade WASD cloudy water flushing practices of the cow site and boil water notices. Homeowners need balanced information from the village, government about the water pipeline. County water has been promoted by village government as a hundred percent positive and zero percent negative. Much money has been spent in the past few years by the village on promoting and studying this initiative. We keep hearing that well water is a problem and that quote, quote, unquote, problem that needs to be quote, unquote, solved. But what is the basis for this claim? We already have over six hundred fire hydrants in the village and evidence of arsenic pollution, septic tank cross-contamination and saltwater intrusion is largely anecdotal. When there is water testing in the village, it is periodic, spotty and manually done by state or federal employees. The latest groundwater sampling report from April, April twenty twenty-one uploaded to the village website shows no fecal coliforms, that's, you know, bacteria, low nitrate levels and low salinities. However, one of the four test well, test wells, NW four, does show an increase in salinity since two thousand and eighteen. But it is the test, test well next to the Snapper Creek Canal, which connects to Biscayne Bay. Not enough testing has been done at this test well to draw any definitive conclusions. But if there is increasing salinity, that can be fixed by other less expensive methods and covering the building with more pipelines. What you don't find in the Pinecrest well water is chlorine, as Doris was saying earlier, is what you will find in Pinecrest well water is chlorine, chloramine, which is chlorine mixed with, reacted with ammonia, fluoride or PFA, PFAs. These are carcinogenic substances found in county WASD water. These compounds also kill plant life over time. That doesn't sound very environmentally friendly. Just one more paragraph, Mayor. This project needs to be tabled so that Pinecrest homeowners have time to discuss it further. Remember, prior water projects were turned down in two thousand and seven and two thousand and nineteen. Also, former Pinecrest mayors and council members were mostly in agreement that homeowners could keep their water wells. I'm not sure what happened in the past few years to make the council tone deaf to the needs of over one thousand homeowners on this issue, but I suspect it has something to do with development. We all know that builders, contractors and developers are lobbying the village behind the scenes for large-scale, big-dollar projects and those can only be affected with high-volume water pipelines in place. Please don't let the developers degrade the suburban character of Pinecrest. We've seen the negative effects of urbanization in Coral Gables. It's not pretty. Please keep an open mind and vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Okay, who wants to go next? You? All right, welcome aboard, like I said.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jack Zipper. By day, I'm the Chief Position Executive, Chief Plenary Office for that, the South. I'm here representing myself.
Wonderful.
So thank you for that privilege. I've lived in Pinecrest for twenty-one years, six to eight, five Southwest ninety terrace, ninety-nine terrace. I come here to support municipal water. There are three reasons and important foundations we need to do this and we need to seize the moment and do it now. The first has to do with health. Among the things that we do as physicians is try to prevent the bad from happening and happening emergently. We don't want people in our emergency rooms to leak heart attacks. We prevent it. I don't know how many of you have measured your well water. Our well water has a lot of calcium. It's the natural part of the well water. In order to soften it so the calcium doesn't deteriorate the pipes, we need to add a water softener that exchanges two sodium ions for one calcium. Have you measured the sodium water in your soft, sodium levels in your softener water? It's not compatible with good health. To drink the well water is problematic. What's going to happen as we move forward is runoff, pesticide, all the things we know that are going wrong. And the potential of your neighbor's septic tank from rupturing and being in the water that you wanna drink is an accident we don't want to have happen or a problem we don't want to have. The next reason is safety. Everyone's talked about fire and the ability to get water onto something. It's an obvious benefit for us with climate change, whether people are supportive of believing it or not, it is happening and we can expect more fires and more intense fires. And maybe the most important for those people that are here that are obviously profound supporters of our community, it means a lot. The reputation and the economic benefit of our community requires that we do this now. We are living in the past century or before. Running water is the way of the future. We need it. We need it now. We need it for the safety of our kids. We need it for the safety of our homes and we need it for economic criticality. Don't deprive us as citizens of this important opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, that's it. Ms. Kyle, please. Please, name and address.
Okay, Trish Kyle, Lance's mother. Seven four seven five Southwest one oh two Street. I have a nursery and what I tell the customers is we're on a well. And everybody in this group is drinking bottled water, they're not drinking well water.
Just please direct at me so we don't get personal with anybody.
Well, what I tell, tell my customers is, what they do is they take their water in can, they fill it with their city water, let it sit overnight and all that crap that they put in it evaporates. Then you can water your plants. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. It's good advice. Anyone else?
Let me introduce myself. I'm Harry Spicer, ten thousand and one Southwest Seventieth Avenue. I've spoken with you before and I've mentioned something before. I'm gonna mention it again. There's something that troubles me about this whole process and that includes Anna Hokuma, which I hope you will pay attention to me, please.
Please, please address me.
Please, I see you're looking at something else and it troubles me when I can't get your attention.
Everybody's listening, just, just.
Okay, let, let me just say something. There are people in this community that wanna be left alone. I, I happen to have county water. I don't have any complaints, but I do talk to people who do have well water. And what's happening here is this, there's an overriding issue that seems to be dominating the entire discussion. The issue is money. This is all a money issue. There is water available now. It has been available in the past. It has been available for a long time to anybody that wants it. It costs money and most people don't wanna spend the money. So guess what? A pile of money just fell on the council and they're going to spend it because they don't know what else to do with it. There are lots of alternatives, but I don't object. I'm not here to say that I don't wanna see money spent for water. If people want county water, they have a right to do that. They should be allowed to do that. What you're doing is forcing everyone to eventually get on it because you believe that's what they should be doing. And that is what I object to because, you know, you had a, a team of people here from the county, including the new county commissioner that extolled the virtues of the water. You had the fire chief who says he can put out fires. He didn't say that, that he did say he could put out all fires. He didn't say we had a shortage of fire hydrants. He said he could put them out. I listened to what he just said. If there's a problem, all he had to do was say, I see a problem. I think we need at least a hundred more fire hydrants or a hundred and ninety-one fire hydrants or some number. All we keep hearing is anecdotal evidence. I believe we need this. I think we need that. I think we should do this and I think we should do that. But where are the facts? I keep looking for facts. I keep asking for facts. I keep wanting to know, what is the problem? How do we solve this problem? There is a problem here that can be solved and I ask you as council members to slow down, take your time, study the problem. I've asked the mayor, the last time I was here, how many people in the next group of seven hundred want water, want county water? The answer was I don't know. Is that correct, Mayor?
I don't recall.
You don't even recall, but that was your answer. Cause I asked you, I'll ask you again. How many people in the next group of seven hundred want county water?
I don't know, Harry.
You still don't know. So we're going to make an ordinance to, to, to go ahead and give people something that you don't even know that they want. What do you think about the fact that of the group of the first seven hundred and so on people that received the county water lines, of that amount from your own statistics, it indicates that seventy-six point four never connected to the water lines. What's wrong with that picture? They have the water line right in front of their property. All they, if they want that water, in ten years, they still haven't connected it. I think the ratio is closer to eighty percent. So if eighty percent of the people receive water and the county spends millions of dollars putting in water lines and we're about to spend millions of dollars putting in more water lines for, for something that very few people want. The people who want it, I understand, they really, really want it and they make a good case. So I say, okay, if you want it, you can have it. We'll even pay for it. But how, how about the people that don't want it? Do they have a say so? So I'm here to speak for those who are quietly asking, please leave us alone. We have our reasons why we like the water. Do you have to force it upon us? I happen to have city water. And I'm asking on behalf of the citizens who you represent, all the citizens of the community, do one thing. Please give the people of the community the right to express themselves. Try to solve this problem as a whole, instead of just saying, here's the money, everybody just, just let's get it off my lap. I wanna spend it and be done with it and solve the problem that way. You're solving it by just dumping money on the citizens, forcing people to do things that they don't wanna do. So my last request is simply, I ask either table this or defer it and let the people speak the same way they spoke on a referendum. They spoke loudly and clearly that they didn't want to spend their money to pay for water for, for people that could always get it. The point is, no one is, is holding the water back from anyone. It's always been available. It's a matter of cost. They don't wanna spend the money. There are certain people that did spend the money. If you want it badly enough, you can have it. Now we have it for free or almost free. And so I ask, if you give something to people for free, the government comes in and pays for it, there's a catch. And the catch is you'll eventually have to use county water. And there are people here who really would like not to do that. And I'm asking one thing, please defer this issue. Give it some time. There's no need to rush. We did it the last time. We asked not to be rushed and you lost last time. So you're gonna do it again and you're gonna vote as a group of five to force everybody to go along with the group of five. I think it's wrong. Please defer. I ask, please defer, table this issue and do it in the future. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thanks for being here. Okay, who's next?
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Francisco Garcia. I have been a resident of Pinecrest for about sixteen years now at ten thousand six hundred Southwest Seventy Second Court. I've enjoyed my time in the village of Pinecrest immensely. With the exception of the great hardships we've endured whenever there has been a storm event, that has deprived us of electricity. The reason for that is that for as long as there is no electricity in our house, because we are on well water, there also happens to be no water available. I have three children. I have an elderly mother. Most times are trying, to say the least. So allow me to add my voice to those who want to impress upon you that it is urgent. It is indeed urgent that something be done about those of us who are still enduring these circumstances and have to live with well water. We do so grudgingly, rest assured. Now, clearly, but for a project like this, we individually would not be able to afford the infrastructural improvements necessary to take the county's water to our individual property. That should be clear to all. And clearly, we're also happy to pay our share of whatever the amount of contribution is towards making this project happen and finally bringing county water to our residents. I think that is a fair proposition and we for one are happy to sign up for it and certainly happy to see it happen as soon as feasible. One last remark. I've heard it said that it is somehow unfair that monies that are available, generally speaking, for infrastructural projects that should benefit the entire village are allocated to only the few who happen to still be on well water. This strikes me as somewhat disingenuous perhaps because it is always the case, it is necessarily the case, that whenever there is an infrastructural improvement that takes place in any municipality, by any municipal government, some will benefit from it more than others. If a street is broken down or is repaired, it is the residents along that street that are disproportionately affected and the residents along that street when it is repaired that will be disproportionately affected as well. Right? And, and so for all the reasons that you've heard from the expert and for, for all the evidence that you've presented in support of this project and at least as one resident, speaking on behalf of the six residents of my particular household, I would urge you to please consider passing this resolution today and moving the project forward.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Okay, anybody else wanna go?
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Munilla and I live on sixty thirty Southwest one hundred and fourteen Street. I am, I'll make it short. I'm here in support of this project. I've been waiting for it. It's, I've, I've, I'm very much in favor and very happy with the assessment that is gonna be imposed to us. I also wanted to make mention of one, one of the previous residents that talked about assumptions. I think is the word that he used. These are not assumptions. We, we have a problem here. I think that this board is here to bring on project, prosperity and infrastructure into our village to bring us into the future. It's crazy that we are still on well water. My family, I have six children, so it's eight in my house. And last year, I conducted, actually, I'm sorry, I'm still in the COVID hole. It's more than, more, way more than last year. I did a test of my water, my well water. And I tested only for two things because it was so expensive. I spent five hundred dollars with a private company and they focused trying to find if I had dieldrin or arsenic and they came out positive for high levels of dieldrin. So I've been waiting for this. This is something that I hadn't, that I didn't do before because of cost. Now the money is there to do it. Yes, I would like to benefit from this. No, it's not something that is only for me or the seven hundred. This type of project was instituted in the past and it benefited most of our community. So we would like to be included in there. I also call on, on your authority to exert justice and not set precedent where, you know, one year, you know, we are benefits a group and then another year, you have an opportunity to benefit the rest and it's, it's ignored. So I, I call on you to pass this now, not to defer it and to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The manager just texted me, just to remind everybody to speak up to folks at home who are having a hard time hearing with the microphone. So when you get up to the microphone, just make sure you, you speak loudly. You did wonderfully. I think everybody heard that. You're good. Okay, anybody else wanna go? You're brand new. Come on. Just bend it down. There you go. Perfect.
My name is Al Caplan, ninety-two hundred Southwest Seventh Avenue. I bought my home in April nineteen ninety. At that time, most of the homes in the area of Pinecrest were on well water. That was before the Sunnyland Cleaners contamination and before Hurricane Andrew's three-week electrical outage. Over the next almost three decades, hurricane seasons have become more active with more outages. For those of us not on the county water system, that meant no running water for days or weeks at a time. No way to wash ourselves or our dishes or even flush a toilet. We also learned of many cases of bulk contamination in our very area with poisonous chemicals like dieldrin and arsenic because this was once an agricultural area. By twenty seventeen, when I joined Sandy Galbraith and later Sherry Wall and Daniel Ennis in their efforts to complete the water project, we, without county water, had already participated in the payback of the two thousand four general obligations bond, which gave many of you access to county water. I'm greatly concerned about the health and safety issues of continuing to operate on well water with limited fire hydrants. There have been environmental changes, including rising sea levels and increased salinity that make the situation worse to approximately seven hundred and forty homes without water access. I am appalled by the selfish motives of the opposition, most of whom either have county water or access to it. They have even conflated our issue with their current cause of disputing the requirement to connect as their ten-year grace period has expired. But now with the twenty twenty election, we have seen sea change in the makeup of village councils from local members who are not only willing to listen to us, but wholly believe in the mandates, complete the project with county water access for all of the villages, approximately six thousand households. With eight million dollars in, from the American Rescue Plan from the federal government and five hundred thousand from the county, this is the time to complete the infrastructure. Only the affected homes will pay the additional one dollar per day or less for twenty-five years.
Let me stop you. Just move the mic a little bit closer. They said they're having a hard time. I apologize to interrupt, but you're fine. You're doing great.
With eight million in American Rescue Plan money from the federal government and five hundred thousand from the county, this is the time to complete the infrastructure. Only the affected homes will pay the additional one dollar per day or less for twenty-five years in property taxes as special assessment. I ask, if you are not part of this very group, why do you care? It doesn't affect you. The use of the eight million is very narrow and it goes away if we don't spend it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's up? No, no.
My name's Laura McDonald. I live at one thirty-four oh one Southwest Seventy Fourth Avenue. I actually asked, thank you, I asked downstairs, my comment is a statement actually, and it is not about the water, but it is on the report. And they told me to go ahead and make my statement.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to speak on the update provided in this meeting's monthly report, specifically on the firearm litigation. Some time back, the council joined other municipalities attempting to create restrictions on specific firearms within Pinecrest. After meeting thousands of residents, I want to share with the council that the residents that elected this council did not elect them to try to change or restrict our right to firearms.
Hold on.
As stated in the update, the village has
Does anybody recall when we did, this council has not taken up anything related to firearms. Mr. Clerk, has this council, we've been elected since November, have we dealt with firearms?
No, it was a prior council.
Okay, okay. Please continue.
It's not your main to us.
I just wanna get, I know there's a timeline. So as stated in the update, the village has already spent nine thousand dollars of taxpayer money, which I believe most residents feel is irresponsible. I asked the council to draw up this litigation and any further attempt to restrict firearms within the village. Either people did not elect you to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody wanna talk about water?
My name is Judith Lortos. I live at one oh two one oh Southwest Fifty-Ninth Avenue.
Judith, you're gonna have to put that pretty close to you. There you go.
I support, I support the project because I feel that all the fertilizers that and I was told that people will not give up their green lawns and that's what they need. In addition, the, the salt water coming in and we have no idea when. So getting the city water now is like buying insurance. So when the saltwater intrusion comes, we have a setup that we don't need to use that salt water. We wouldn't be able to anyway. Also, since we have the money from the government, it's useful to do it now. If we wait, that money will not be around. It won't be available. And it'll be much more expensive for the homes that don't have the wells. And that, that's a tremendous difference. That'll be a tremendous difference. And I guess that's about it. Also, the convenience at the hurricanes, you know, I mean, the hurricanes to me is not a big issue. What I'm concerned mainly about is the water being salt, the saltwater intrusion, and also the fertilizers and the money.
Got it. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Let her go, and then you, her, then she got up first, and she's going to go? Okay. You're welcome. There you go.
My name is Barbara Scher. I'm at seven zero four zero Southwest forty Street, I live in Pinecrest, California, since nineteen eighty-six. I'm lucky to reiterate everything that I've heard tonight. I just want to say, this vote today is possibly our last hope to receive potable water access in the foreseeable future. Please don't fail this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yep.
My name is Viraj Vikman. Fifty-nine ninety-five Moss Ranch Road. I have been living in Pinecrest since nineteen ninety-eight. My two children went to Pinecrest schools and before they graduated. For me, the water issue is a health issue, it's an environmental issue, it's a safety issue, and I thank you all for doing your best to put this through. This is our last chance, I think, for a long time. So, I hope, you know, we'll have some success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. You know, do you know if people are having a hard time hearing at home? Is there anything we can, is there, how's it working? Is there a speaker downstairs, or is there, is there a way that we can?
It may be the mic, the wireless mic there.
All right, let's, let's see if we can, I want to make sure that everybody, both downstairs and at home, can hear. The mic seems to be working, right? You can hear the mic.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is there any way to turn on automatic postception? Does the system have that capacity?
Or the volume downstairs? We just, we'll check it out.
Test, test, one, two.
Yeah, the mic.
Yeah, the speakers just need to, it's pretty sensitive because of the overhead speaker.
When they move the mic down, it starts to sound shaky. When they have it, all like you have originally, it's very perfect.
Okay. They can hold it. Whatever they want to do.
Put it on the podium, and then each speaker, please just hold the mic up and speak into the mic, not too closely, because that's why they're getting the shaking voice. Just so that, you know.
All right. Slow but sure. All right, Cilla, what do you got? Do you want to say anything? All right. Who wants to go? Ladies first. Ladies and pink first, and then you, sir.
I'm Becky Roper-Matt Cove. I live at one two eight eight one Southwest Sixty-third Court. We've lived in this home in Pinecrest since nineteen ninety-one, and when Hurricane Andrew hit in nineteen ninety-two, we discovered that when you have a well and you lose electricity, you have no water to drink, to wash your hands, or to flush your toilets. We have saltwater intrusion seeping into wells from Coconut Grove all the way to Pinecrest Gardens. We have seen pollution from toxic chemicals that make some wells a health hazard. And we have seen property values affected negatively by lack of municipal water lines. We advocated for the incorporation of Pinecrest, hoping that would bring us water. We advocated for years with Pinecrest Council members, Miami-Dade County Commissioners, and our state representatives, who all passed the buck from one entity to another, saying no money was available. Well, now, we have a funding source, and there is no excuse not to support this project. We, as taxpaying residents, have supported many amenities like new parks, soccer fields, tree plantings, a municipal building, a community center, whether we personally benefit from them or not, because they make our community a better place. Providing access to safe, potable water to all residents should not be considered an amenity. It is the most essential of services, and to withhold it from seven hundred families when money is available is unjust, unfair, and unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do me a favor, because we got people, there's a lot of different opinions in the room, let's just, you know, wave your hand, let's not clap, so, you know, I don't want to start an argument with anybody in here. So, here's how you do it, sir.
Good evening. My name is Pierce Groo.
Good to see you.
I live at one oh seven forty Southwest Seventy-third Avenue. I'm here tonight to thank the council and get my support to this issue. I've heard a lot of talk about facts related to this.
And I personally, my wife and I were very heavily involved in this process for some time, and the thing for order. I personally contacted the Department of Health, going back, and I received data from them, and I mapped out how contamination did affect the bottom of the area. And this, that is happening. There is contamination. It's not oppression. It is a fact that there is contamination. I also went as far back to look at contamination, dry cleaners, many, many years ago, and saw how quickly that deed spread to far regions of Pinecrest, all the way as far as one hundred and sixty, then as far as all other. Pretty astounding how, if there is some new contamination, how quickly that spread apart and spread, and I think it had to be. So, for me, this, this is a health and safety issue, and I'm happy that you're supporting it. I'm happy that you took this opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Come on, no, 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 no. Don't clap. Waving, waving, that's the waving is cool. That keeps us out of trouble.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
My name is Adilia Lugo, seven two nine zero Southwest one hundred and seventh terrace. I did not prepare anything for today, but I'm here to show my support, and, you know, I share in all the opinions of everyone that has come up here and, you know, supported this. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here and voicing your opinion. We appreciate it.
Good evening, and Mr. Mayor, I'm one of the members of the council. My name is Alejandro Palacio. I live at one three four zero zero Southwest Sixty-third Avenue. I'm here in support of this water infrastructure. You know, above all, it's definitely a health and safety issue for the well-being of everybody at Pinecrest, not just a select few. And I thank you for extra dining and taking this.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate your opinion. Sandy? Welcome back.
Hi, I'm Sandy Valda. I'm very excited about the hosting. One oh seven forty Southwest Seventy-three Avenue, Seventy-third Avenue. I'm already forgetting my address. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of this project. This is something that came, this money came as a miracle to us, and it's great that we have it, and I really am thankful to the council because you decided to go for it and to vote, five, we had five votes on the last meeting, to support this project that was left behind from the GOV money. That aside, because I don't want to talk about bad today, I want to talk about good and moving forward. I'm happy that this is, this has come out to this assessment, which is very affordable to everybody. A dollar per day is, is a no-brainer. I mean, it's, it's great. Please continue with this. I support it, and what can I say? I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is George Martinez. I live at one zero seven two five Southwest Seventy-third Avenue.
What's up, George?
Thank you. Thank you for doing this. I've been a resident of Pinecrest since before it was Pinecrest. When people would ask me, where do you live? And I would say, you know, where Fuddruckers is on US One. I live on the other side of the. Not a great landmark, right? Exactly. Mark, that's fun. And I live in a wonderful municipality. I want you to have a pool, which also serves as a bathtub when you lose your power after a hurricane. Thank you, Katrina. Thank you, Wilma. They were bathing in that pool for two weeks until we got our power back. Thank you. Thank you all for your service. We know you get paid huge dollars to do what you do. It really is a thankless job, so we really do thank you for all you do for our community, and thank you for not being taken down. Thank you for stepping up when things got difficult, at first long, so many of you have. It's been mentioned before that there's a long list of other projects that we've done that have helped make this community better, make it an ideal community that make other people want to. When we did vision Pinecrest a few years ago, I dug out my notes, just to see. One of the questions that was asked was, who should pay for the water? And it came back resounding, the top two were the county. And then number two was the county, the village, the resident. Seems to me like we're looking to give tours in the mouth, because the federal government wasn't even an option. It didn't even register for anyone. So, we have an opportunity to spend this money in the very little scope of projects. This obviously makes sense. I guess I want to end by just saying, please help us get the ball across the line. I feel like we've gone ninety-nine yards. I don't want to celebrate early and drop the ball on the one, one-yard line. Please help us get the ball across the line. Thank you for all you do for our community. Thanks, George. I'll get it.
Mike Freiberg. I was born sixty-three years ago. Sixty-eight forty Southwest Ninety-second Street. Our well is significantly contaminated with dieldrin. Fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for any house that is contaminated with anything. The department will test your water, or you could pay up fifty dollars to have it tested, and that money is available. I don't only pay for you to hook up your house to the meter, but the meter's set, and as much of the pipe as that money will run for. If you had five houses that were all contaminated, multiply that, you've got a lot of money, enough to pay. I'm totally in support of using the government money, not waste it, which is the way I often see things done in Pinecrest. I'm sorry. And I guarantee you, we are going to get hooked up, because now we have a meter housing and a line across the street from our neighbor. It will cost me nothing. No one in Pinecrest has ever stepped up to the plate to take me up with a contact or anything to use the state fund that was designed to pay you to mid-age drinking water wells contaminated by pesticides and pollutants. It's a perfect government paradigm. You use the pesticide, you pay a use fee, goes into a trust fund. If the well's contaminated, they pay for it and restore it. Now, I have no interest in this personally, not here for anybody else. Now, thanks to our neighbor across the street, we have water available, and thanks to that trust fund, it will cost us nothing. So, we're fine. We're all set. So, please, use the government money, but please, please, test any wells that might be contaminated. Apply to the state of Florida. I'll give you the contacts, and use that fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to put it into the pot, so you can use the rest of the money to make sure everything else gets done. Please be efficient about it. I want to support all the other neighbors. I'm sorry to tell you that I can't have children because of the dieldrin that I was raised on, and that's really a shame. And I'm sorry, Pinecrest has done nothing for any of us. I'm here to do anything for anyone to help and to support you in doing this. So, please, think about using the money. Don't even think about using this for sewer. It's not an A or B thing. Water, drinking water is critically important. And by the way, has anyone talked about sealed aerobic septic systems to replace our open septic systems that go into a grain field? That's something we can do, and that will prevent stuff from getting into the water table also. So, I support you completely, and I hope no one will deride you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
And the problem with your sound system is you have no speakers down there. These speakers face backwards. You notice the way I hold the microphone. Thank you.
You're like a professional. Anybody?
Hi. I'm Davaney Faber. I live at sixty-one twenty Moss Ranch Road. I've been waiting to hear something to add, because everybody's been very eloquent and concise and to the point, and have said everything that I have been feeling and wanting to say for a very long time. This is a gift. You know, there's been a lot of division in our community over this topic, and I would love to see it finally go away. So, I thank you all. You're all wonderful, and I know you all have Pinecrest in your hearts, and you want the best for all of us. So, I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
I don't know about you, but I follow deep floors. I don't know my water as well, and I do believe that over the years, we've been exposed to contamination. I've been at this property since nineteen ninety-three. I've had to deal with the new ads, new, new pumps, new wells, the hurricanes, what have you. But the one thing that was interesting that I had heard is that when your well collapses, what do you do? And I had that problem in two thousand, because when we had to put a new well, we had to stay away from structures that were built on adjacent banks. We also had to deal with septic tanks. You can't have to be so far from a septic tank. Now, with all the current developments, if your well fails, you don't have water. And it's not like you can pull somebody out to get it right away. You will be contaminated, because you're going to have to put an emergency well next to your septic tank. We need water. We all need to drink water, and we need healthy water, and I appreciate your support of this proposed project.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Got to be quicker, Ken.
Amanda Garcia, sixty-five oh five Southwest one oh nine Street. I've been a resident of Pinecrest for thirty-three years, and I had a question in my mind, am I going to be paying a lot more money for the water by the way I supported the project? So, I got a water bill from it then, that I have, small house in the northwest. I hadn't seen a water bill in thirty-three years, so I didn't know what it looked like. Anyway, it was a hundred and ninety dollars of three months. The water portion was sixty-three dollars. The sewer portion was a hundred and nine altogether, and the stormwater was about fifteen. So, if you divide sixty-three dollars for water into three years, you got twenty-one dollars. Last year, I paid, you know, in October, forty-three hundred dollars to replace my bladder tank, my two filters, and the water softener. If you put away that into a ten-year life cycle for that equipment, that would be about thirty-eight dollars a month. In addition to that, you have a quality issue, reliability. The Renator goes without power for twenty-one days, with Ermat, twenty-one days in seventeen, ten days. So, that's thirty-one days without water in thirty-three years. That's pretty, pretty bad. So, this is a good deal. I support it. I'm fiscal adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Ken Farman. I live at one zero nine zero one Southwest Sixtieth Avenue. I am on well water currently and very supportive of this project because of those undertakes. Thank you for taking the opportunity to get this done. I have some concern about, there's some talk about the rush of it, but I do think there's some urgency, because I do see what's possibly going up significantly over the next year or two. So, it's something they can get done soon. I think that's a plus. Also, in talking to some of my neighbors, I know there's concern about being forced to hook up. And especially when it was county that was possibly going to pay for this. It's sort of understandable that they're going to force everybody to hook up when these 700-some-odd homeowners are pitching in a chunk of the money. I think it's a little different equation. So I'd like to thank you for trying to work with the county to get the more time extended 20 years on having to hook up because I think some of those people that want to keep the well water and don't want to be forced to hook up right away, I really appreciate that. So again, thank you very much and good luck with everything.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Grau. I live at 13025 Southwest 60th Avenue. I've lived there for 10 years, and I am very concerned about the water because there is contamination in water. Not in my house. Happy to say I don't have that. I've had, I go to a gym where there's a lot of people from Pinecrest. And I've heard two sides of the stories where neighbors are saying, oh, but the sewer, but the sewer, but wait, why don't we finish the water first? But they have water, so she's okay with her water. But the rest of us, 740 homes that doesn't have it, we don't have water. And I think it should be completed. It should be like your guys are doing right now, trying to get it paid for. I think the neighbors that need it, you know, we need this water, so we're in support of it. The contamination is my concern, not so much for my home, my neighbors. We have children. We have people and we have, and the water, when there's a hurricane, that's a big issue too. So I do support this project. And then we can continue on with sewer. It's another story, big one for the day counting.
Our next mission. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Rogers. I live at 64. We've been living here for 30 some odd years. Unfortunately, we're not here, but it's not been trying to live with me. And we've got well that's been giving us issues and problems from day one. Not only do we have problems that relate to safety, our health, it is clearly a no-brainer to allow these people who don't have audible water on the county to have. I think that's a huge safety, not permitting it to occur that, especially since we have the money available.
Thank you. Go. Get it while you can.
Gerald Greenberg, 12365 Southwest 64th Avenue. There's nothing I can possibly fathom that needs to be added to this discussion. This is obviously an issue of health, of safety, of state. It's one that's been in this village for, I guess, forever. And you have a wonderful opportunity here, and I thank you all for seizing it and thank everybody who's worked so hard to get this done. It really is not just an opportunity to fix a problem, but an opportunity to show the village, to show our kids, to show everybody how government can really get things done. Money came from the federal level on down, and here you are, a chance to fix it. So thank you for all you're doing and all you've done on this. And again, thanks to everybody who's led this effort for decades now. I'm looking forward to finally getting it resolved.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Pam Ayers. I'm at 12535 Southwest 63rd Avenue. I have lived in Pinecrest in the unincorporated county since 1989. And in the beginning, I have to admit, when we talk about well water, we've been talking about it for 30 years. I liked my well water, and I was very happy with it. I didn't want to change. But now I am a Realtor in the area, and people think, well, water, there's no running water. I can't hook up. People want to hurt me. It's mortal. When I lose my trust fee, I have no water. I have no water for my food, no water for to drink. And I just think, we're not a third world country here in Pinecrest. We're in one of the nicest places. And we should have running water. Another thing, what has kind of changed my mind is there's a lot on our streets that the county or Miami Dade Water Sewer, they take, they go by and take samples all the time. So I started stopping and talking to the lady, what does a sample look like? I was thinking she was going to say wonderful. She didn't say wonderful. She said it's really soggy. It's not a good sample. So every time that I see her there, it's not getting better. And what I'm worried about is we're going to get to a point where it takes so much time to get the water. It's such a hard issue. When we're really desperate to need it, it's not going to be a quick fix. And I know that you guys are stuck with a really tough issue, and it's really not fair that somebody's going to take the hit. And you know, Joe, I've been talking to you about water forever, probably every time I see you in a community that uses it for a function.
Every single time. Every single time. For decades, it appears.
But you know what? It's, I completely twinned my line. I just think it's fair to have running water. It's me, a basic, basic need. That's, I have to tell you, I am sick when people are invested. And I think that one of my husband's friends gets to hook up. They don't like being forced up in 10 years. I think my husband's friend got it, so they noticed he has to hook up. But I'm like, at least you have that choice. And it's a gift to have running water. It really is. So thank you, and you voted for it, and I think it's greater than you.
Pam, do you like, do you like the Miami Dolphins?
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll start talking about that next time we see each other. We'll have to pick a new topic. Exhausted water.
Rebecca Ramos, 11820 South Mitchell Manor Circle. I've been a resident in Pinecrest since 2003. We've lived in two properties, always with well water. I'm no fan. And I'm going to be brief. I firstly want to thank you for what somebody described earlier as your political courage. I know it hasn't been easy. It's taken a lot of political capital and effort and hard work from your part, so we really appreciate that. Secondly, I would like to push back against the argument this matter to rest once and for all. The referendum was put to the voters for something, a very completely different deal than the one that we have on the table now. I think that we have a wonderful opportunity to get us safe and clean water once and for all. We don't have to wait for another 20 years to procrastinate and decide if we want it or not. And myself and my family would fully support, wholeheartedly support the project going forward. And we urge you, or we implore you actually, to pass a special assessment. And just get this done once and for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Alex Munoz, Mayor Council. Thank you so much for sitting through this and for your leadership. So many great arguments, so many great reasons have been given. Won't restate that. Just a great opportunity to take advantage of this funding and to not be in a position in the future where it is an emergency for residents. And it's deep pockets that would be needed to address that type of personal issue for someone like our neighbors had to deal with across the street over on US-1 over there in Continental Park for some time. So just again, thank you so much. You think you've heard so many great reasons today. I just wanted to add my voice to that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, Mayor, council members. My name is Roberto Laub. I live at 12120 Southwest 63rd Avenue. Being on my sixth, fifth contract actually with my family, it was very surprising to lots of my family members from Brazil. Lots of our friends from Argentina, Chile, and Portugal where we lived before, to learn that we don't have running water in a developed country. So that was difficult for us to explain. When some visitors come to our house, we have to teach them where their filter water come from so they can drink that one and not out of the regular tap, right? And it's like in our conversation to tell them why it's like that. So I think when we see the federal government saying, for those that have old cast iron pipes, we need to replace it because it's the right of the population to have clean water for them to drink so they don't get contamination from the material of the pipes. We said, no, we don't have any pipes to be contaminated from. At the end, what we have is the possibility, and maybe some of the wells already contaminated by raised sea level, raising sea level, right? So I think we have an amazing opportunity, you guys have, we all have, to access funds and not put the burden on everyone. I was not allowed to vote on the referendum. Now we are at home, so we're for people more voting at home. But I think instead of not being allowed to vote on an issue that we pay taxes for, that we are deeply impacted, being here and be able to speak with you, it's even a much better opportunity, and I think that speaks highly of the city. I'm sure that any investment that we're going to have to make, even personally on that, comes back on the value of our properties easily. If not at first, but over time. So for those that are a little bit concerned about that investment, and I do respect their opinion, I also expect them to respect ours. And I think we're here on a not individual issue. It's a collective issue. Public health, it's a collective issue. Like we're all wearing masks because of each other. We should really be worried that we have some people stating here that they were personally impacted by public health issues. I think that concerns all of us and not one of us as individual or one of the residences only. So thank you for making this possible. I count on you to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey. How's it going? My wife killed me 22 years ago, and his three children have 12205 this lane, and we love Pinecrest. And this is my first time in this room. I'm not proud of that fact, but I'm sure that this is an important issue to my family. I'm going to say a few words. According to the U.S. Geological Survey, M.U.E.D.A., between 85 and 90% of local councils have access to municipal water. In a study of over 2,000 wells done by the U.S. GS, 20% of wells contain waterborne contaminants at a concentration greater than a human health benchmark for drinking water. Contaminants most often found at these elevated concentrations were inundating chemicals such as metals, radionuclides, and nitric, nitrate. Man-made organic compounds such as pesticides and solvents were detected in 60% of the well sample. And microbial contaminants such as bacteria were detected in about a third of the samples. In addition, contaminants found in domestic wells usually co-occur with other contaminants as mixtures rather than alone. Which is a potential concern because the total toxicity of a mixture can be greater than that of a single contaminant. Our city tests the municipal water over 100,000 times a year, something we as individuals simply cannot do. Who can say what risks exist among the 700 families who rely on wells in Pinecrest? And who can say what risks will emerge in these wells over the coming decades? This proposal is cheaper than making a new well, doing frequent testing, or installing a whole home filtration system. It is also a welcome fact that homebuyers prefer homes that do not rely on wells. And that all homes will increase the value by much in this relatively small incremental assessment. I recently looked into having to write a contract to provide help for five families on our street. And the cost would have averaged over $50,000 per family. This is an insanely good opportunity for you. I applaud each of you for your public service and feel terrible that some used this opportunity to allege corruption associated with this process. I'm sorry. You served better. There's been much discussion of democracy here tonight, and it's for the most part been a good discussion. But what some people don't seem to accept is that we cannot have pesticides on every public water project. That's why we have a council to weigh the amount of projects and make the right decisions on our behalf. You, our village council, are elected by the residents. Pinecrest has not only the ability, but I believe the responsibility to see that this final work is.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Greenberg. I live at 6446 Mitchell Manor Circle. I've lived there for about 38 years. And I just, at the outset, would like to crucially acknowledge that we've been getting this far. This is a great opportunity for us to get the water so that, you know, base air, clean air and clean water are basically set for all the needs and for us to create, get clean water in this situation of contaminants getting involved and so forth, including pollution. It's an opportunity that we can make progress. Every family has a strong, lots of this power, this work, the predicting, the millions of work. I just want to appreciate your efforts and get it so far. Please get this going so that we can all move forward and have access to clean water.
Thank you for your opinion. What's happening?
Good afternoon.
Thank you for your leadership in bringing us to this level. Also, I applaud all council members to bring all of this matter to such a great level. Basically, you all know you must operate, and we need to work. But having said that, you are like the guardians of our soul coming. Being a guardian of our community, you are the person, you are the people who bring the hope. They would say, no, they don't need it. They need all the people who is not here. So this is, we are suffering from the double. And if you wait for the majority to make this, parent would be proposed last. The majority of the people who have been comfortable with it, they do not want it. But the minority should not suffer. With the majority, many a time, the decision has to be made. But the parenthood, looking at the, and supporting the leaders cannot respond. So here is the opportunity, we are in a work that obstacle to support the minority of the people that have been subject for 30 years. If you were waiting for the majority all the time, you may not have the opportunity to vote. You would not have the opportunity to buy a property. So they said, it won't enter their conscience, and you don't think they have done that in an animal thing? I hope you continue to hold out to that.
Thank you.
Can we at least acknowledge the fact that the Surgeon General of the United States' parents are standing.
Yes, please do.
A little starstruck.
Hi, I'm Anne McMaster. I live at 10700 Southwest 60th Avenue. And I'll be brief because I've already expressed in a very lengthy email and probably spoken to everyone here personally about my support and my husband's support and my entire family, which consists of two adult-voting children, our support for the water project. I really couldn't, the advantage of going later in the program is everybody has pretty much said what's been said. But it's not about me personally. I told you about how many thousands of dollars we've spent over the years on our well system, replacing it, the softener, the appliances we have to constantly replace, but against people who, you know, don't like the taste of the city water. But it's not about me or the other person's personal preference. This is a public health issue and a public safety issue. I live on 60th Avenue, and my neighbors very close to me, within a block or two, have already found arsenic in their well and saltwater intrusion. This is a public safety disaster that is waiting to happen. And moving forward with this project is probably the most important vote you'll ever take. I did a chair real quick. I came straight from the dentist, who is also a Pinecrest resident without water. And so she made a promise, put this on the record, so I know she's not here, but it's Dr. Andrea Diamond Cantor and her husband, Dr. Steve Cantor. They live at 6201 Southwest 1 and 2nd Street. They're all in for the water project. They have just said they're well-tested. It came back with a very high reading of calcium, which the tester person told her that is not even supposed to be present in well water. So I think that she's representing her husband, a representative of a huge majority of people who did not show up to speak for themselves. Whereas we have, you know, a few that did show up who don't have a dog in this hunt, as we say in Alabama.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. All right. Sherri Ball, you're back. Welcome back. Yes, it is.
Sherri Ball, 6300 Southwest 109th Street. I'll say the, the most important. I'll say the, the most important thing first, which is thank you. This is an incredible opportunity, a, a legacy program. And I, I thank you for what you're doing as far as visiting this issue. There's been a couple of things said about the timeline. I, I think it's pretty much public record that it's a 25-year timeline of effort that we really got pushed a couple of years ago with the Hurricane Irma to, to learn more about this. And I think if anybody isn't educated in this village at this point, then they've been living under a rock or they just went here a year ago. So everybody's constantly aware of it. So I think we're fortunate that we've had that timeline. We've had a gazillion surveys. I've got pages and pages of people who have emailed and talked to y'all. I think there's been not just a survey of support. I think what's really different than 12 years ago is you've got a survey of who wants to connect. And it's urgent. And I think that this very much shows you that the population of Pinecrest has changed. It's, it's a different dynamics. They want to move forward. The majority have spoken. But regardless of the majority, I think it's really wonderful that democracy has spoken and that we've gotten to hear all sides because we should learn something. And nobody's walking away 100% happy. Nobody wants to pay a dime. Nobody wants to be connecting when they don't want to. So we, y'all have done such an amazing job of finding the best solution. And governments are meant to do two things. Create public safety and create community. And community, whether it's parks or it's infrastructure. This fits that bill. You've done a beautiful job of crafting this. So check that box for, for a legacy project. And, and the other thing is for y'all to be fiscally responsible. It would be irresponsible if you didn't do this because you're protecting the people who can afford it the least. There may be people who could afford to pay for the whole thing, but you're protecting the people who could afford it the least by finding something so economical that it makes sense. Is it perfect? No, none of this is perfect. But we have, you have found the best opportunity. And I just thank you for checking that other box of being fiscally responsible and creating a legacy project for Pinecrest. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. And I appreciate all your hard work when you were here on this issue. You've done great. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for arranging for all of us to speak here today. My name is Rushmore the 6390 Southwest 113th Street. And I know this has been a long process. You know, I'm happy to pay taxes that help. Our connection because that's what we should do as a community. We should be supporting each other. We should be fighting for each other's basic rights. Water is a human right. I have worked in academia and I've seen how much people value basic things like vaccinations, healthcare, water. And I can't, that's 2021, living in Pinecrest. I've been here since the early days before this was the village of Pinecrest. And we're still fighting about our basic rights. I feel like we have to, and I think many people here look at water as a necessity as well. And I want us to be able to say proudly that we live in Pinecrest, where you don't have to worry about a well intrusion or chemicals or potential pollution. They can safely have our family drink water in this community. All put in that. And keep it safe. So I, I'm grateful that we're all here today and grateful for this opportunity. And I think that we have to take it back. Somebody in the room asked. Health Corps, I can pretty much say that human health is important.
Thank you for being. Ms. Bailey.
Hi. Kim Farrelly, 1021 Southwest 60th Avenue. I've been on wells. Have this title for several years with our well. Just done two new ones this year. So I think it's a great time for the water.
How many wells do you have?
Sorry?
How many wells do you have?
One for the house and one for the irrigation.
Oh.
Multiple. I don't think water wells are on terms of things. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, something like that. Close enough so they can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. And thank you for your continued hard work on finding a city water for the whole community. All of you are new. I'm, I'm a, my name is Larry. I live on 6435 South Mitchell Manor Circle. My wife and I have been homeowners since 1974. So I've been through all the water wars. I've been here since you came. And I'm, I would say the reason that I would like to do water is for the danger of saltwater intrusion and for water after the hurricanes. I only have a small generator. I've been through Hurricane Andrew, Wilma, Katrina, and Irma, and we've been without power to water for seven weeks plus during the post-swarm. And after the swarm. I am also doing it for the greater good of the community. I ask you the same, I think with that attitude already. I'm disappointed in the attitude of people like John Steinbrenner that sent the uninvited emails to all of us. We're going to have to tire city vote. And I think it was a massive amount of hard-earned dollars a year for 20 years or something. They, they voted that down. So this time for the greater good of the whole community, I would think since the general public does not have to pay anything that's coming out of taxpayer dollars, that they should not, they should look at the greater good of the voter for it or, you know, give your support for it instead of against it like they have done. That's all I have to say. I'm glad you recognized the Surgeon General's parents and sister.
Good work.
And I also want to recognize Sheri and Daniel for the massive amount of work that's helping to get this through. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Danny Guerra, 10720 Southwest. Thank you guys for listening to all of us. I think I'm second to last, so it's almost over. I'm in favor for his position, husband and father. I think someone earlier today said that by themselves, three pallets of water or something like that. Imagine how many pallets it's, it's going to take me after 10 diapers with a three-year-old and, and a newborn. It, it really is something that's needed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Daniel, I forgot to say one thing. I'm a retired 50-year construction manager. Last 29 years, there's vice of construction, the ramping up in water lakes. And also I've been working with limited water smooth almost most of my 50 years since the 70s. It's doing permitting, design, construction, installation, inspections, everything. It's a very complicated process. There's millions, there's many hundreds of steps to get all the way through this. So don't expect it to go quickly.
Thank you. Daniels. Other people are having a hard time.
Hi, my name is Daniel. 463 Southwest 107th. Thank you. I'm really glad to be here and bring up the statistics. There's five people, speak for it and five against it. And from the five, not everybody actually impacted by this because they have not been taxed by it. So I think it's a great support. And I think you also can support the one. I teach 143 public comments, reaching 400 people of the public named. And the reason I invited you to bring it up and because of, you know, everybody kind of referring back to the water war, this kind of magical bullet or kind of things we just sold or not sold something. But I can agree with you in a way that we wanted to find out how is this community, it's not a field book. That is, and it was about what is the attitude of the people who don't have it. And you know that 33.3% of the people that don't have water or is still water. And they still, the order of what 37 people actually voted for. So how is it possible that people actually more number actually than we get the vote? And if you look at it, the participation was 43.6%. So, and we had a really good data that from 2013, everybody had voted. And from that, 23, 23.4% actually supported. So there are a lot of generous people in Pinecrest. And you know, there was, what was the participation rate? It was 40%. Only this is just a simple calculation. You know, there's 92.1% for the people who did not have order, both before the border. I think that's kind of a fundamental thing that the water waters, people have spoken, but people who didn't have order have spoken also. And I think that's actually one of the outcomes. And we did a conversing, conversing about the process. Our number was 99.1%. So I think that we have the support and you have the authorization from the people because of the water war. So we actually have better than a survey. We had a vote. And the other piece, people actually talking that, okay, people don't want to pay that money. Back in January and February, we did a survey to, which, which we really approached the mayor that we didn't want to say how we can actually create a special tax in this way. Because it's a significantly higher amount of money. We still have 70% of supporting the people. So I think it's, I think it's with this amount like you proposed, I think it's a, it's a 90% support you can have. And you can see it from the public records and every, every aspect of it. The second thing is about people made a comment about you rushing it through. It was no rushing here. It's, it's, you know, after voter vote, you actually created a plan to make sure that people, if they want to create a special tax in this, they can do it. But that was non-public information, no rushing around that. And if you're talking about rushing through, the Congress actually passed $1.8 trillion plan, buy that plan. It, 485 members of the Congress did it 11 days from introduction to finishing up. We are already 52 days of this process. So Congress is actually slow compared to the Congress. We didn't really think to say what, what is in the process. And also while we are rushing this, we're rushing it because we actually want to make sure that we stop before the prices are increasing. I think all the price is going to be increased at 500K. So I think it's, I don't think that anybody ordinates here. It's actually willing to pay that 500K just to, just to pay for what. And other people actually said we should give the money back because Pinecrest doesn't need you because Pinecrest is a rich neighborhood. And I, I actually, we're actually giving it back. We are giving it back to the county. This is, we pay for it. We give our money and we give that, our county an asset, which is immediately going to increase with $10 million if only it of this city without decreasing their ratio and also going to generate them at least every year 150, $250,000 revenue. So we actually have been our bigger community with this. This is, you can say, yes, do this for us, but we're actually giving assets to the county. Hopefully, they're going to be efficient. I'm sorry, there's two more topics. One of them is about connecting. We did a survey and people say, oh, people don't want to connect. We didn't connect it. Yes. Because at that time, as Bob Ross said, they, the county made the decision how to build the first water project based on engineering decision. It was not political decision. You know, you know, there was a survey, 60% supported, 40% not. But you know, whatever has happened, it's happened. But still, you made a decision, an engineering decision, which was the right decision. So in this case, we can do this project more efficiently. And our survey showed that 80% of the people willing to connect within two years after they have the line. So I think it's supportive to getting in connection. Also, we know that this is not a partisan issue. So if you see the composition of the people who they speak, you know, on the online and all. It was really, really represented by us. So for example, the last session meeting, there was 43% was Republican, 28% was 10BA, and 35% was Democrat, who was spoken for this border project. So that's, there's no, this is kind of, it's just public safety for us, for all of us. So I would like to, with that, I would like to just one thing to say. The Miami-Dade County also got $527 million. Like we did. $527 million. They got 56,932 something, okay? No, the last three digits. I just rounded up to 527 million. We are giving them this asset. This would be a asset. If you calculate that how much people actually live in Pinecrest and how much Miami-Dade, if you just put in our share with it, it would be like $4.5 million. This is the first time that we get the money, which is free, which is without a G O B bond or anything else. We should try to test them to, and then you're pitching. Because if they're not pitching in the free money, what they have, when we have to do like passing a bond or through a conversion, what are they going to do? So it takes sure that, are we alone with everything what we do? Because that's Pinecrest, we always do, the right thing. And our community, are they willing to do what is their job to do, to help? I just wanted to see that. And I am, you know, I support this project, work hard to make it happen. And I really thank you for each and everybody for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Don't, don't. I was going to do that later. So, uh, thank you and thanks for your hard work. Okay, so I, I've been told that there's no more people that want to speak from downstairs. So with that, we'll go to the people on Zoom if they are there.
Oh, they're there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's do it.
The first registered speaker I had was Ariel Kay, but I do not see her on the call. So I'm going to go to the next person who's.
Yes, and if they get back, if they get back, just provide them the opportunity to come back on and speak.
Mr. Timmons, you're on with the council.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor. It's always, always nice to see you. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. So much has already been said, so there's very little new that I can add. But, you know, it's often said that you have the unenviable position of, you know, serving. I actually, for once, see this slightly different. I think that you have the enviable opportunity to be the council that solves the water issue for all of the Pinecrest residents. And I would like to say thank you. You know, we, we live on a well and I apologize for it. Address is 7291 Southwest 102 Street. We do have a well. We've only been in the house five years and it was new construction when we built it. We've already had to put in two new pumps. We've also had to put in an addition, a new well. First well had some, had some drying up issues. And, and the cost overall of hooking up will just be immeasurably less expensive over, over time. But, you know, in addition, this might be the one time where, you know, if we don't do it now, we may not get another opportunity because the cost of construction is going up. We know that. And water is a basic need that needs to be brought to everybody. And without running long, I just want to say thank you for all of the service that you put in. You, you've done fantastic things for our community and I'm sure you'll continue to do so. And I, I'm sure you have the courage to pass this unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Your next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Abby Rosenbaum.
Hi, Abby. You're muted.
No, I lost the signal for a moment.
Okay, gotcha.
Hi there. Hi, my name is, my name's Abby Rosenbaum. I live at 5801 Southwest 93rd Street with my, I have four children. There's six of us in the household. We've lived here for over 20 years. I'll preface it by saying that if I had known that my house had well water, I would never have purchased it. But having, having said that, we've lived with it for a long time and invested. Um, but having to, having said that, we've lived with it for a long time and invested thousands in trying to maintain the quality of our water. And have, we've spent thousands of dollars purchasing bottled fluoridated water. As our well water obviously is not fluoridated and we had small children at the time. As a healthcare professional, my concerns are mostly from a health perspective. Um, I think that the, when there's loss of power and loss of water, we put the health of everyone at risk, ours and our neighbors as well. Um, we don't have fire hydrants within reach. And again, the water isn't fluoridated. We watch sadly as some of our neighbors within a block or two received well water, we received city water. Um, funded in part by our own tax dollars. So we are fully in support of this measure and thank you for taking it out.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Uh, the next registered speaker was Louis Silverwasser, but I do not see him on the call. The next registered speaker was Lolita Iran. But I do not see her on the call either.
You know, let's make a note, um, in, in, in what, what we're doing here is that these people have not been cut off. These people um are no longer on the, on the line, right?
Correct.
Okay, we'll provide them an opportunity if they get back on the line before the meeting's over to speak. I just don't want anybody confused with somebody who, who may have got off the line temporarily for us stifling their, their pump.
Um, same thing with the next registered speaker was Veronica de, de Candido. She's not on the call. The next registered person is Danielle Puleo. She is. Ms. Puleo, you're on with the village council.
Good evening. Thank you very much, council, for um all of your time tonight. Um, my husband, Dr. Jose Puleo, and I are um here to show our full support of the water. And um, I think it's all been said before, but um simply put, we have no control over what is in our wells. We live in a climate where that requires regular pesticides, um year-round lawn care, which obviously includes fertilizing year-round. Um, we happen to live on one quarter of an acre. Therefore, even if we don't regularly use these chemicals and our neighbors do, it's in our well regardless. Um, we're on well number two. Our babies have been on bottled water since the time that they were born. Um, we don't even like them bathing in it, but obviously we have no choice in that. So we give our full support and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Danielle.
Uh, the next registered speaker was Anita Upalauri, who's also, I do not see her on the call. The next registered speaker is um Jamie Perez, who is on the call.
Hello.
You're on with the council.
Hi, I'm Jamie Perez. I live at one twenty three oh one Vista Lane. Um, we bought our first home in Pinecrest in two thousand and six and we are now living in our second one. And um, both of them were on well water. And we are very, very excited about this resolution. You, you all have our, our full support. Um, we were really disappointed the first time around that we didn't, that the funds didn't make it to, to include our homes. Um, but we're very grateful for this opportunity. Um, I had several things I was going to say, but there's really nothing that I could add that hasn't already been said. Uh, I really appreciate all the other great comments. There's, there's so many reasons that we need to get off well and this is the perfect opportunity. Um, I was especially glad to see the fire chief speak in the beginning. Um, because I feel like the fire hydrants aren't an issue that gets brought up enough and I'm very glad to hear him talk about that. Um, when we first bought our, when we bought our first home in two thousand and six, our insurance premium was twenty thousand dollars higher per year. Just because we weren't anywhere near a fire hydrant. I think that that variance has gone down quite a bit, but I do know that your access to fire hydrants certainly goes into the rating on your um home insurance premiums. Because they look at the, the um, I guess, how um prepared the fire department is to fight the fires in your given area. And of course, having more fire hydrants makes them more prepared to fight fires. So I wouldn't be surprised to see the few hundred dollars that people have to pay a year made up for, you know, moreover, in um the home and, the decrease in home insurance premiums. Um, but anyway, that's just one thing I wanted to bring up. All the other things I had all, was going to talk about all the problems we've had with our well. Um, but everyone else has said it's much better than I could. So I just want to express my support, mine, my husband's, our whole family that lives here. We are extremely grateful to the council for getting this done. Um, it's, we got very lucky and I'm really, really happy and hopefully can take this to the finish line. So again, I thank you all very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Miss, uh, I do see Ms. Upalauri now, so she is on the call with you, Mr. Mayor.
Who's that?
Ms. Upalauri.
Okay, that's perfect.
You're on mute.
Hi, this is Anita Upalauri. I've actually been online right from the beginning and I'm not quite sure why you couldn't see me. Um, and we, we live, we live at sixty four seventy Southwest one hundred and sixteen street in Pinecrest. Um, and we're very glad of this opportunity to see that hopefully water will be coming to us. We have lived in Pinecrest for twenty one years and in these twenty one years, we have never been able to take clean running water for granted. For all of the reasons that have already been mentioned. But um, we have spent thousands of dollars in replacing all of our units. Uh, in just the last few months, uh, we've had to replace pretty much everything to try to get running water. And so um, in, actually, three days ago, our pump lost prime and started to burn. And we were lucky, we were in the house. Otherwise, we, I'm not quite sure what would have happened. So we're also afraid to leave the house for any length of time because we never know what's going to happen to our systems. Um, my question to every one of the commissioners, potential commissioners that used to come knocking on our door or during elections, anytime was always. When are you going to give us city water? So I'm so glad to see that this is coming. Uh, we fully support it. We really look forward to having, um, taking running water for granted. And um, thank you so much for considering this and please make the right choice and get us running water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sherri Tropin.
Hey, Sherri, what's happening?
You're on, Ms. Tropin.
Hi, I'm trying to get my picture on, but I can't do that. Uh, my name is Sherri Tropin, oh, here it is. And I uh live at fifty eight forty five Southwest ninety third street. We've lived in Pinecrest for over thirty years and um support this measure very much. All of our family does. We've raised three children here. Um, we've lived through several hurricanes where we've had to take water from our pool in a bucket to flush our toilet. Um, and then we've had to move out of our house when we've had no power because we had no running water. Uh, we've, everybody has said everything else about the health, uh, the fire hazard. Um, and the great expenses of water treatment that, um, plant that we have to put in our house to. Um, keep the rust and the minerals out of our house, which many times doesn't work. Um, and it's a huge expense and I, I love living in Pinecrest. The only bad thing about living here is not having city water. And I hope that uh, that will now change. This is a great opportunity and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Dresnik.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Or CB, okay. That, thank you very much. Uh, I'm here to speak in support of the uh, this water resolution. Um, I think you've, you've all heard from me in the past. I've written to you and uh, there's little, there's little I can add to what I've already said. Uh, and more importantly, there's little that I could add to what you've already heard tonight. Because you've heard some wonderful things from a lot of people who support this project, including our family. We've been here for over thirty years. Um, something that was said by one of the earlier speakers um is something I hadn't thought of. And I thought it was a very uh excellent point. I just wanted to remind you, it was one of the physicians that had spoken earlier. And he spoke about emergencies in medicine. And um, and I think it really struck home. I, I'm not sure whether we have a public health emergency now about the water. Um, but we certainly are going to have one in the future. It's just a matter of time before we have more and more contaminated wells. We have an opportunity to fix the problem now. You don't want to and you're, and you don't want your successors to have to deal with some public health emergency. It would be disastrous for the entire village of Pinecrest. The publicity would be terrible and the public health implications would be horrible. So this is something that we need to take care of now. And the other thing I want to say, which is, which I've said before, is um the right to public drinking water and pub, and potable water. Is a right that all citizens should have, you know, all residents of Pinecrest should have. I've been here for over thirty years. I've always wanted the water. We've heard from many other people that have always wanted the water. For some reason, um, my family and many other families did not get the water when other people got it. Uh, and I'm talking about the public water. Now we have the opportunity, so I do implore you to please act upon it. And just the last thing I want to say is I want to thank the commission, the, the council. I want to thank the mayor and all the council members. I think you've handled this situation beautifully. It's really a testament uh to this, to this village and how well um local government is working. And, and you're working, uh, and I, and I've heard some people say you're working too fast. Uh, that's a, that's a strange complaint. Uh, you're working at the right speed and you're taking advantage of an excellent opportunity. And my family really thanks you uh from the bottom of our hearts for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Guilford.
Hello, Mr. Guilford.
I think it's a camel. It's a camel.
Oh, I can't see. Okay. You guys hear me? That was a camel. That uh, I was out back in Australia around uh Uluru. You know, camel riding for fun. Is there any other way to ride a camel? Other than that, it started at five thirty in the morning, it was a great trip. Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Guilford. I reside at fifty eight hundred Southwest one hundred and eighth street. First of all, I want to echo the sentiments of the vast majority of people that have spoken already. And in support of the water project and finishing of the water infrastructure in the village. And bringing uh the access to water infrastructure to the seven hundred remaining homes in the village. Uh, there are about six hu, six thousand homes in Pinecrest, of which fifty three hundred have gained access to water infrastructure. Uh, leaving approximately seven hundred without, and I am one of the seven hundred. Uh, the village has been grappling with this issue since its inception some twenty five years ago. And this appears to be the best opportunity to address and tackle this monster that has presented itself. And frankly, the entire time I've been involved uh in the village. Uh, it is not a question of if we are going to lose our wells for those who are concerned about losing their wells. The question is really, when are you going to lose your well? Or when is the well going to quit producing drinkable water for you? Uh, Pinecrest, unbeknownst to me, but we had the water meetings, has sunk four monitoring wells around Pinecrest. Two of which are in my neighborhood, one at Pinecrest Gardens and one behind me at approximately Southwest sixty second Avenue and one hundred and fourth street. The well at Pinecrest was most recently tested and showed fourteen thousand milligrams per liter of salt at the seventy foot depth. That is fifty six times the allowed salt level for drinking water. At thirty feet, it was showing a hundred and ninety three milligrams per liter, which is roughly fifty milligrams less than breaking the drinkable water limit. I mean, we are right there at the salinity level in that well. The well that was at one hundred and fourth and second, sixty second, had nitrate levels at thirty feet, which is generally the drinking water level. In excess of allowed level. Um, again, it's not a question of if we're going to lose these wells, it's when are we going to lose these wells? Access to clean drinking water is a public health and safety issue, no different than supplying police or fire rescue. And I believe it is government's responsibility to provide for the health and safety of its residents. The provision of access to water may not be a legal obligation for the village, but it certainly is a moral obligation. The village has been provided with a tremendous windfall in the American Rescue Plan. Um, my concern and objection frankly to the whole proposal is this. Um, the village appears from the documentation wanting to hold back a million dollars from the project. And utilize that money for the repayment to the village of lost revenues there and or COVID expenses during this period that we've just gone through. I don't think anybody has looked at this and realized that by taking that million dollars away from the water project. And using it to reimburse the village for lost revenues, you're shifting the burden of those lost revenues to the seven hundred versus the village as a whole. And I just don't think that's right. Um, I, if you put that money back into the water project, you reduce the per household cost by fourteen hundred dollars. Um. There comes a time when you have to put politics aside and do the right thing. I think the right thing is to put the entire amount in the project, make it as affordable, the least amount of cost shifted to the residents that are affected. I urge you to use all of the funds from the Rescue, American Rescue, Rescue America Plan. As well as all available funds from the county and any other source that you all can find money from. And reduce the burden to the seven hundred by the greatest extent possible. I really appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me. I know it's been a long time. I'm looking at my watch, it looks like we've been at this two and a half hours plus or minus. A lot of it's been repetitive and a lot of what I had to say was repetitive. But again, I appreciate your courtesies and, and listening to me and thank you for taking the time. Thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
Next speaker is Joel Adler.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Joel Adler. I live at ninety three twenty seven uh Southwest sixty second court. Uh, my family and I have lived here for about twenty five years and uh we love living in Pinecrest. The only gripe we've ever had has been the water issue and the unfairness that seems to be that we were one of the seven hundred or so homes. That were excluded uh from county water. Uh, we've also had the same problems that everybody else has expressed. Uh, it seems like we have a golden opportunity uh to take advantage of, of, of a once, perhaps in a lifetime uh situation to remedy it. Uh, I think that uh it would be truly a crime to let this opportunity be passed over and not take advantage of it. Uh, I don't begrudge anybody else in Pinecrest having uh access to water. If they want to use it, don't want to use it. I just ask for the same thing that the other village residents have. Uh, my family uh feels strongly about this, we strongly support it. Uh, and uh, the only saving grace is it's, it's really nice to see our government in action. And I'm very proud of all of you for the job that you're doing. So thank you and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is John Maricini. Dr. Maricini, you're on with the council.
It looks like he doesn't have a microphone connected. Can you see that he doesn't have a microphone symbol at all next to his name?
Mr. Mayor, if he, if we can't hear him, he may be having technical difficulties. You can ask him to type in the chat.
All right. John, we can't hear you. Can you, can you, I don't know if you have a microphone connected. Is there, is there where you can type your. Words out, there we go.
Mr. Mayor, another alternative is he can call into my phone here. I can give him a phone number for him to call in.
Please do.
Mr. Maricini, I'm going to send you the phone through the chat function. So you can call.
That, that's all the registered speakers, Mr. Mayor. There are a few people on the call that have things like numbers as identifiers, so I don't know who they are. If they want to use the raise hand feature, if they still want to speak, we can recognize them.
So what, so what we'll do now is ask anybody that's on the call or anybody that's at Village Hall if they would like to have the last opportunity to speak. If you are on Zoom and just just raise your hand, use the raise hand feature, notify us that you'd like to speak and we'll, we'll make sure that you have the opportunity. And we'll give it a couple of seconds until you guys want to take a two minute break and then we'll come back and and if anybody's raised their hands. And if not, we'll then, we'll then close the public hearing, have an internal debate and then both, okay? All right, okay, we're going to, what did Chuck Woolery say? We'll be back in two minutes and two seconds, two and two. Do I, did I date myself on this? What was that show called? Love connection with Chuck Woolery.
Is there anything, anything we can do? Where's the cork?
I'm sorry, John.
The lady's in there.
That's a rare problem in this room.
That and wine.
Then I would not be cold.
They must be so proud.
I know.
And I wonder, I mean, I'm assuming this is
What a beauty.
Yeah, she's
Tell me about a woman that's broke. Like so commanding. I love this woman. We used to go to Peru. For some reason, all the nurses were male and the doctors were female. And so there's nothing to play, right? And so we had an elevator one day. And this guy comes in, you can tell he's a surgeon, so he's scrubbing, and he's just very commanding. And Casey looks up and she goes, look, mommy, he's a nurse. Did he say anything? No, I, and I didn't correct her. I was like You know, I don't think we've ever had that. And I know you're not a true, but you know, I see you must work twice a year.
Yeah, I do.
What is your name? Patient problems with you earlier. Do you hear me now? So can you hear me now? All right, thank you.
All right, it's been, we got everybody back?
I think so, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so is there anybody left that wants to participate in the public hearing? Any, any speakers?
There's one other person that I
Sorry, I've made the connection at last.
Let him do it.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is John Maricini. I'm at one one two five zero Southwest sixty five Avenue. And I've been there since nineteen ninety three. You know, there's a couple of quick points here. If we delay, the price of this goes up. I mean, you have a bid that's part of your quote, but that's going to change if we, you know, lose the moment. It's going to be higher cost for the project. It's going to be higher cost for appliances that fail. There'll be health effects for these contaminants that we've already talked about. And by the way, no one says that we can't use our pumps and wells that we already have for our garden, you know, and separate that from our household function for the city water. You know, the basic question is, do we want to be a village of the past ignoring the future? Do we really want to think that the rising sea is going to ignore us? It will not. Do you think the deep pesticide legacy that we live on now creeping upon us is going to ignore us? It will not. You know, we have to stand for our children. We have to stand for the future. We have to stand for the health of us all. We're offered like a gift of safety here and how could we not take it? We're offered an investment to say who we were and why we, the few, are thinking about the many. And I, I hope, I hope so say we all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, anybody left?
No, sir.
All right. With that, we're going to close the public hearing. And what I'll, I'll do is start a conversation and then we'll debate for a minute or as long as it takes, we will seek a motion and then we'll, we'll decide on this issue. So I'll start and I was interested by something Mr. Spicer had said. And he asked me, do I know the number of people that supported this or not? And I, you know, the answer is no, I don't know the exact number. And I think, I, I, I think that the important thing is that it doesn't matter. It's the right thing to do. I think the last speaker said it well. We've got to move forward into the future. It's, it's to give people the opportunity to have access to clean drinking water, which is, you know, it's been several hundred years since it was you know, acceptable not to have access to, to that type of water. This has been a twenty five year problem, right? And people will tell us, I get heard multiple times, you politicians have come to the door and promised us one thing and and now you, no, I mean, I've come to people's doors since two thousand and six. And this has been a priority of the village of Pinecrest since I got involved way back when in ninety six. And and so this has always been a priority for us. We've always had it in our lobbying programs to seek money for grants. It only came through once before. And and we, we took efforts like this. What we didn't do before, you know, is, is, is finish the project off. Here, we've got a significant amount of money to finish the project off. We need to, we need to charge, we need to raise a tax, right? That's the specialist assessment. I think we worked very hard to be fair. The referendum was critical in getting to this point. It was part of the, the, the ability to get to this point. If we never asked for the referendum, we would have never been able to decide, just like way back when we did this in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, whether the entirety of Pinecrest wanted to pay for it. The answer was no. So the next best thing to do was, was a special taxing district. And as Daniel put it, as we saw today, there are clearly enough people to sign a petition to do a special taxing district. And they would have done a special taxing district this spring if, if by good fortune, we didn't have this money come to us. And so this is as cheap as the project's ever going to be. I think we worked hard to be fair. I think we worked hard to be fair to the people who in the referendum wanted to spread the money around to other things. We have a little bit of of money to spread around to other projects and and I think that's fair. It's important to get us to this point. We've got it down to a dollar a day. And I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. And I'm, I'm going to be supporting it and looking forward to doing so. And I think it'll be a proud day in Pinecrest when we do that because this has been a twenty five year problem. So anybody else?
I mean, I just like to echo what you said. We have listened to residents talking about being burdened with bathing their children in their swimming pools with having to use some pool water in there, you know, to flush their toilets, being saddled with the cost of testing, pumps, filters, the anxiety of not knowing whether your family's ingesting unsafe water. I hear those that don't want to connect. The beauty of this is that they're not going to have to connect on the immediate run. And I think we should continue our efforts to extend that period. I shudder to think of the amount of plastic we're generating buying bottled water in Pinecrest. I think the time is now. I don't feel rushed. We're not in an emergency situation. We have had ample opportunity to discuss it and I am prepared to support it as well.
Let me take a step back in my comments. You know, we didn't hear from, we've heard from a lot of people over this period of time. There was a few people that didn't support it. By and large, the people that didn't support it, particularly the ones that were here tonight that led the group of non-support, already have access to water. And and the fact of the matter is that they just didn't want to hook up. And but that's a non, that's not necessarily the issue here because we have a ten year moratorium. So the folks that will gain access to this will have ten years before they have to hook up and the commissioner is working with us on even greater, maybe even twenty years. And so I think we, you know, I don't think these folks will agree, but I think we've put their, we, we should have satisfied their needs by having not only the, the ten years that Mayor Lerner was able to get, but the ten years that, that, that Commissioner Regalato may be able to give us. So I, I see no negatives from their perspective.
Yes, it's, it's something that we've been working on for twenty five years. And in that regard, you know, it is a problem which government has been very slow to solve. And the interesting difference is that we are perfectly positioned at this moment to take advantage of an unprecedented, impossible to imagine federal windfall. That if we hadn't been working methodically through the potable water problem for the last twenty five years, we would have been caught flat footed on. And there's no possible way we would have been able to get this organized, structured, bid in the ground and paid out by December thirty first, twenty twenty. And I think the rush is that we are ready to go. We even have a bid that's still good until next month. And that speaks to how many councils over how many years have been coming at this problem over and over and over and over and over again, from every possible angle, eliminating options that weren't going to fly, seeking funds that in many cases never materialized. And so unusually, we have a situation where government is prepared to act, act appropriately, act responsibly, act efficiently, act at a fairly reasonable cost for everyone involved and solve the number one infrastructure deficiencies that our communities have been grappling with since incorporation. To be completely honest, I am entirely supportive of this and I will be proud to vote for it when the time comes.
Yeah, I agree. I was here taking notes and if anyone is interested, we had fifty two people who spoke. We had four who are not interested in the, in the project. And three of them do have access to county water, as you mentioned. So we only had one person on well water who said no. So that says something. One person out of fifty two percent. That's Daniel. What, ninety nine percent? Ninety eight percent. So I mean, that says something. And I, I really, I want to thank staff because I, I really liked hearing from our commissioner and the, the fire chief at the beginning. That was the first time that, you know, we kind of had a, a meeting, all of us together. And I think that was very helpful. I think that was helpful for our residents to hear what they said. And I believe it was the, the Florida Health Gentleman. It was kind of hard for me to understand what he was saying, but I thought he said water is food. Did he say that? Which I thought was an excellent quote and it's kind of that just summarizes what I feel. And this is just a problem that, that we need to solve. And I said this from my campaign, you know, this isn't the well water residents problem. This is a Pinecrest issue. This is all of our issue. We all live here besides supporting each other, whether you don't feel the need to support your neighbor. I can promise you with sea level rise and our septic tank failures, which we've been told it's not an issue of, of if, it's when. I can promise you, we're going to be like Flint. We're going to be like Tampa. We're going to be all over the news and all of our property values are going to be in the toilet. So if it's difficult for you to see yourself help your neighbor, think about how it could affect us as a community and how this is important for all of us to do as a community. So I am definitely in favor myself.
You ready?
So I guess there's a few things I'd like to point out. Start with, I've always been about the hydrants. I, the chief spoke. And the county is able to hire to provide fire service, but the truth of the matter is that a hydrant within five hundred square, five hundred feet of a home is in every code book in the country and the NFPA says it, OSHA says it. His own county code says it. We're going to put that infrastructure in for the fire department, for the county. It's unfortunate they didn't do it twenty five years ago or they didn't do it, make the developers do it back in the day, I guess, but that was, you know, the way the county went. I unfortunately bought in an area nineteen, my home's nineteen fifty eight. And in nineteen fifty eight, the developer put in water, so my home had it. I want to make people had mentioned about the the county put in the bond. It was a county bond that put in the water in two thousand and seven. It wasn't the Pinecrest residents that we raised the mill and took out general funds out of the Pinecrest tax, your taxpayer money to pay for that. And I'm, and I think that the county, when they put that in, I'm, I'm sure that, I don't even think when they put in those water mains, they even put in meter boxes. Manager, isn't that true? That that, back in that day, they didn't even put in meter boxes.
Well, that we, that project, because we managed it on behalf of the county, we did put lateral and meter boxes. The ones that don't get meter boxes and the laterals are all the private developer, development ones, which since
So when a private, so when a home, a homeowner builds and it skips seven homes to get to him, they
They don't have the lateral connections.
Lateral connections, they're not obligated to put in. But when we put ours in, we put the
We put it into facilitate, right?
Okay. What else was I going to mention? I would hope that the county mayor, that after we're putting in a lot of their infrastructure, would give that waiver extension. I mean, I hope the county does. It's a solid. I hope that they're listening. And they're listening to, we still have seven hundred and fifty, don't we, that don't have, that have the ability to hook up but have not hooked up. Now that may be a case of where they just have a line, but they don't have the meter box. And a meter box is very expensive to put in. I mean, to tear up the street and run it across the street. So maybe that's part of the reason of those seven hundred and fifty. Maybe you can cut that in half, I guess. We'll never know. I mean, so yeah, I'm, I'm I'm all about the hydrants and fortunately we as a council have the ability, like the mayor said, we are attorneys and advisors, we have the ability to assess the homeowners that don't have access to me, to hydrants. We have the ability to assess just those homes, not everybody, just those homes, the three hundred and something dollars. So I think it's a smart thing to do. It's infrastructure. Hopefully we get the extension on the moratorium to twenty years. All in favor of that? And if everybody gets together and they want to to campaign with our county commissioner and the county commission and trying to get that moving forward, I think that's, that's the way you do that because we are certainly saying up here, I think all five of us have said that we're all in favor of that extension and I think the mayor is working hard to get that through, so. It's a good thing. I mean, it's been a long time. It's been money that's coming from the federal government. That was, like one of the speakers said, came in eleven days and I don't think that we're rushing either. I mean, we've, I've been here in these meetings since we were in Everglade Park and water's been talked about forever. I mean, we have a I mean, we have a ready-to-go engineered plans, ready to go. I mean, that doesn't happen overnight. The mayor can tell you, he does those plans. Those take a long time to develop. We've developed these plans because we've been planning for this for years and we knew that there may be this time. And so, here it is.
Yeah, this is definitely a collective victory for Pinecrest. Everything that was done since the days of incorporation. Every council that sat here focused on water from day one, aside from a lot of the other hard things that they had to do. And we're in, we're in the right place at the right time. The money came through, plans were ready, it's ready to go. Any, any other group could, would have taken advantage of the same opportunity, so.
Well, I probably would say rushing would have been if we had no plans and we had no idea in what the cost would be. And we're just throwing $7 million. Well, shoot, we could have did the plan, gotten it back a year later. And the engineers come and say, "Well, it's going to cost you $86 million." I mean, we didn't, we, how would any of us know? So, I mean, we were anticipating for years and years and
We were ready for the
Yeah, you never know when the state's going to give money. We never knew. We always lobbied. We hoped and never know.
And as several residents said, and I think it's true, I think construction costs are going to, I mean, you probably, you know better than me. But I would think with all of this money trickling down to all these projects all over the country, that construction costs are going to be going up.
Well, nobody likes to assess people, but this is what we got to do. This is, this is the most fair, the lowest cost this project is ever going to be. I think it's our responsibility to do it and it's the right thing to do. All right, who wants to make, who wants to do the honors?
I'll move, but I feel like we should do a communal movement. Can we do that?
No.
So, you can all co-sponsor the item. Someone has to move it. Someone has to second it.
I would move that we should all co-sponsor the item. I have that.
I'll second.
I would second. No, I think, I think so. I think, I think it's important that everybody understands that this is something that the council's been working on together and is doing together. And that we rise together and fall together. And this is, I think, a great moment in the history of the village.
Yeah, that's important.
That we're getting this done.
All right, so we had a motion and who seconded it? Katie?
I have Councilmember Abbott, and if you'd like to memorialize the vote, I'd be happy to call the roll.
Please do.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Prado?
Yes.
Councilmember Hokumer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craft?
Yes.
Mayor Coradino?
Yes.
Congratulations. The motion carries.
All right. I wanted, I want to thank everybody that participated in this process. This time, we, it was kind of different. We did it Zoom. We did it live in person. I, I want to say I value everybody's opinion. Thank you for spending the time to weigh in on this. I, I think we came up with a great solution. And from a point of personal privilege, I've been sitting here since 2006. I've been in this very room and in other rooms when these processes completely imploded and they, they, they didn't work the way this one worked. And so, this may be, if not, it is my, one of my proudest moments as an elected official in the Village of Pinecrest after, I don't know, how many, 15 years or something like that. Because we, not only do we have the opportunity to do it, but like I always say, it's just as in, how we do something is just as important as what we do. And I think we did it the right way this time and made sure the public was heard, didn't cut anybody short, had no, no arguments. And, and we were done. So, with that, we'll move on to tab six.
That's a resolution of the Village of Pinecrest, Florida relating to the Potable Water Improvement Project, describing the locations of the potable water improvements to be provided within the Village of Pinecrest. Directing the village manager to prepare in addition to the preliminary assessment role, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed special assessments and the method of their collection. Directing the provision of notice and providing for an effective date.
Yossi, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, this second resolution is basically augmenting the list that we've already passed with the prior resolution. We identified an additional 20 or so homes that were not part of the original mail, mailing that we sent. Or were erroneously noticed because of change in ownership. And we've also identified approximately 40 properties that are technically, they're corner lots and technically already have access to potable water because they have a line abutting one of the sides of their lots. And what we're proposing is that we send those corner lots notices that provide for a timeframe for them to opt in, if they like, into this district. What'll result from that is we're coming down the street regardless in front of their home with pipes. But we would be putting in the lateral connection and that meter box that the other line may not have or doesn't have. That cost alone may make the, being part of the special taxing, or a special assessment district more financially beneficial to that property. So, in those cases, they'll have to opt in to be part of the special assessment district.
Okay, great.
So, we'll be noticing that what you're going to be authorizing me is to go ahead and send them the notice. So, we'll go through the same process again for those properties and then you'll have the, the final rule, resolution at the June meeting.
Can those properties opt out?
They cannot opt out if they don't have access to water. In other words, the, there's the 20 that don't have access to water will be made part of the special assessment district unless there's an error and they already have water.
Okay, got it. And then questions from council?
In the corner lots, basically what you're saying on the corner lots is they will have the option to opt out.
They have to opt in. In their case, they're not in it.
They will opt in.
They have to opt in.
Because the geography, the geometry of their lot may be that their house is, is oriented in such a way that in effect, it's the equivalent of having a water main, but on the backside of your house rather than the front side of your house. And they may, for all intents and purposes, do far better being part of this special assessment and running, running it down the side of their home as well.
Right, for what, exactly. Well, what's happening is not about whether it's on the side or on the, you know, the back of the home. The issue is, for example, those properties right now have access to water. But what that means is they have a line there. They may not have the lateral, or they don't have, rather, they do not have lateral or meter boxes. So, what ends up happening is those people will get hit with a derm letter telling them they have to connect. And for you to connect to a live water line, tap into that with pressures already in the line, it's, can be a lot more expensive than just the, the cost that we're proposing as part of the special assessment district. In which case, we would build that other line with a lateral connection. And then all they would have to do is do the home service line, which is, you know, a lot, could be a lot cheaper.
Would, would that have any effect on the maximum possible assessment?
It'll bring down the cost because you'll have more properties that are part of the assessment district, so.
The more people who opt in
The cheaper it is for everybody.
The less expensive it is for each, each property that's part of the special assessment. So, bringing more people into this project is not going to make it more expensive for
Correct, correct.
That's important for everyone.
Right.
Any other questions?
Correct. Those lines will be built regardless.
All right, we'll, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody would like to speak on this? Daniel? There is a one-second time limit.
Make the people fair and they should understand the hope of the process. Because, you know, they have like 20 days, whatever, and if they forget to, you know, reach out to you guys, they will not be letting that in. This actually is important because you know the cost, individual person doing this project, exactly four times more expensive than you guys. So, it's like anybody for them, if they are missing it somewhat, I don't know, it's like, what efforts are you going to do to reach out to those people? Because of, you know, I, I don't know those people before, and I tried to reach out to everybody. But this is kind of a new concept and I totally support it because you don't leave people behind. That's great. Just wanted to make sure we have a good mechanism to reach out to those people. Because I'm afraid they will not, they don't know that they have to do this.
I think, I trust the manager that they will be able to You dropped it. You did that, you did that on purpose.
I dropped the mic.
You did that on purpose. You were, you were going to do that regardless. Okay, okay. So, Kito, is there anybody online that wants to speak on? No? Okay, so with that, we have a motion? Motion is second.
I'm sorry, who is the second mayor? Councilmember Del Prado? Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Prado?
Yes.
Councilmember Hokumer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craft?
Yes.
Mayor Coradino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, let's go to ordinances, tab number two of a first reading.
Okay, on first reading, an ordinance of the Village of Pinecrest, Florida, amending ordinance 2021-3 enacted by the Village of Pinecrest, Florida on March 9th, 2021. Authorizing the borrowing of money and the issuance of debt in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the purposes of financing the construction and acquisition of certain capital projects and providing for an effective date. There is one registered speaker on this item.
Okay. Yossi, do you have anything?
This is, if you recall, we, the council approved doing the bank loan to reimburse the village for the cost of the Gary Matzner Park property. And a million dollars that was going to go towards refinancing an existing loan at a better interest rate. And we're asking for an additional million, which is why we're having to amend that, that original ordinance to cover the shortfall for the Upper Garden project construction. When we did the, the big bond that we did in January, we had yet, we, we had not received the final bid cost for construction for that project. We had, you know, the way that the, they advertise, that the Florida League of Cities advertises these bonds issuances, it happens months in advance. And at that time, we were working with project estimates instead of true bid prices for the project. So, that $1 million shortfall is, would be made up in this bank loan.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No, it's, it's pretty clear.
Kito, we'll open the public hearing.
Strike that, Mr. Mayor. The person's no longer on the call.
Okay, okay. Anybody want to take a shot at this one?
I move. I'll second.
Motion is second. What, we want to abstain?
You can, you cannot, you cannot abstain if you do not
I just do like the county and I go back to the bathroom.
Well, that's up to you, but you cannot abstain if you don't have a conflict.
Take your pick.
We'll wait for you.
Yeah. We will, we'll.
They don't wait at the county.
All right, so, all right, so we got a motion is second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Prado?
Yes.
Councilmember Hokumer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craft?
Come on, Doug.
Yes.
Mayor Coradino?
Yes.
Motion carries. This ordinance will be on second reading on June 8th. Next item on second reading, an ordinance of the Village of Pinecrest, Florida, amending the 2020-2021 operating and capital outlay budget for the second quarter, providing for an effective date.
This is second reading. I don't know if there's any questions on council?
No, no.
None for me.
Doug, you know, it'd be really special if you motioned, if you made a motion.
I mean, we, I like the audio visual. You know, we needed to do that.
Well, you agree.
Although this camera's a little
We don't want to push you, push our luck. All right, who wants to make the motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second.
All right. Just, Mr. Mayor, for the record, this does require a public hearing, although, although there's no one on the Zoom call or in the room, so. But if you'll open and close the hearing for the record.
We'll open it up. See, nobody there. We'll close it and then we'll, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Prado?
Yes.
Councilmember Hokumer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craft?
Yes.
Mayor Coradino?
Yes.
Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted.
All right. We'll go to reports and recommendations, village council. Just one thing. We, we met with each of the mayors this week on the issue of the, the proposed, I guess, rapid transit zone that there's been discussions about it, Miami-Dade County layering around US1. The, yeah, the, the previous discussion that we had before they, Commissioner Gilbert has taken it back to reform it was that, you know, they, they, the county would want to zone everything within, was it a mile? A half a mile on either side of the US1 corridor between 125 and 500 dwelling units per acre. And aside from that, the county would then assume control of not only that zoning, but the review and approval process within that area. Clearly, that would be devastating to the Village of Pinecrest. So, we, we have, each of the mayors met, we're, we're, we're going to get a, I've put, put some information together explaining what that would do to each of our cities. When, and maybe an alternative, maybe we can help, help the county achieve its goal, which I think is a, is a respectful goal to, to support the rapid transit system. But I think, but I think we can figure out, number one, how we can do it with our control and how it can be done in the appropriate scale, right? 500 unit acre, units an acre is way too much. A half a mile into Pinecrest is way too much and the county's control over it is way too much. But there, there is something we can each do and every city's different, so we're going to put that across. We're going to invite our county commissioners to a giant meeting of all of us, that everybody's invited to. And, and have kind of a workshop and work through it and see if we can't make sense of it as we go forward. But definitely, I think that's our approach. We, we want to be able to fight this as much as we can. Now, the second thing was that we heard today, and I think that Yossi's got the potential legislation that she wants to pass around. The county is also looking, it's very unclear where they want to do this, but take a two-mile swath on either side. Is it two miles on either side of US?
Two miles on either side, just in the south corridor.
Just, just in the south corridor, two miles on either side to also do an additional upzoning or upland using. And I don't think that was just in industrial areas. I thought it was everywhere. It's unclear what that means to Pinecrest, whether it would be in Pinecrest, whether the county would have control. But, but we are tracking that as well, just so everybody's aware. And I think that we, again, were ahead of this issue when we started our US1 workshops and we need to stay ahead of the issue. But everybody needs to know that's going on because it's going to take all of us, you know, to, to reach out to the community to let everybody know this, this may be happening. And, and then to reach out to our county commissioners because they're, you know, we need their support on this as we go forward. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I, I know that the, their, that particular order, proposed ordinance language is going to be coming before a committee, I believe, on Thursday. And it coincides with when you're getting installed as the new president for the Miami-Dade League of Cities. So, I, I've been asking to see if anyone on council would want to go to the county for that committee meeting. I can definitely have Steve Olmstead there, myself, and then I think some of the council members were out of town. And I'm going to work with Councilmember Del Prado to see if she can switch something on her schedule to be able to be there.
Mitch, can you do some resonance for us as well? I mean,
Yes, and we'll certainly attend. The item is to amend the county's comprehensive development plan. So, it's not an upzoning, it's an upplanning. Obviously, the upplanning of the
Can you explain an upplanning? Because I, I've just really never heard of it.
Well, it's an amendment to the comprehensive development plan, which means that the, the comp plan would contain a goal of expanding the densities in that corridor. But it wouldn't, it would not have the effect of changing the zoning automatically. So, for example, if, if it applies to the village, we would still have to upzone the properties in order for them to be consistent with the plan.
Wouldn't we be compelled to do that if they
I, it would certainly make it much, much more difficult to deny an upzoning that was sought if the comprehensive development master plan calls for that area to have greater density. So, yeah, you, you would want, you would want consistent So, yeah, you, you would want, you would want consistency there. But at this time, we don't know whether they even in, whether the, the sponsor of that ordinance, Commissioner Keone McGee intends for that to apply on the east side where the cities are or only on the west side in the unincorporated county. It's not clear from the text of the legislation, so that's one of the things that we're going to have to try to find out and we're gonna be working on that.
Can we get clarification on that, Mitch, so that we know?
We're gonna be working on that tomorrow. I, I would also say that these things, that both this and the other item that the mayor was referred to earlier were coming from individual commissioners. In the prior case, it was Vice Chair Oliver Gilbert. This case, it's Commissioner Keone McGee. And the, the stated goal, at least in the case of the Gilbert legislation, was to create the densities necessary to bring heavy rail. It does not appear to me that there is universal agreement among the other commissioners, including the other commissioners that have districts in, that, you know, have the south corridor on them to do that. And so these are, at the moment, kind of wild, moonshots, I guess, by the individual commissioners, perhaps intended to bring attention to the issue without necessarily having a realistic plan to to do, to, to create those kinds of changes at the level in which their initial stab that the legislation have aimed. But, yeah, as you pointed out, it's important to monitor and try to keep some control over the process so that we don't wind up in a situation where we're at odds with the county over land use in the village.
Right. I appreciate that. And just the final part of my report is I wanted to thank Commissioner Regalotto for everything she did on our, on our, on our water issues. She's been super attentive and communicative with me, at least, and I hope all of you guys as well. As she's gone through the process and she's been really helpful in communicating with Miami-Dade County. She's always willing to set up a meeting so that we can understand the issues a little bit better. And, and I've sat here for a long time and that level of support just hasn't, hasn't always, it's never really been with what she's bringing to the table right now. So I would, I wanted to, obviously I'll thank her personally, but publicly thank her for doing everything she's done. It's been, it's been wonderful for us, so.
And I have to echo that. I mean, I, I've had contact with her about different issues than, than the ones you've been dealing with her and with her staff on, and they have been responsive, quick to call, quick to set things up, always follows through, very rich, the ball doesn't get dropped. It, it is an, a really unusual level of service. And particularly for somebody who's been a sitting town commissioner for about seven months at this front, to have scaled the learning curve and brought the staff and her own office and her own performance at that level, I think should be publicly acknowledged. We're always so ready and willing to criticize people when they deserve it. We should also be ready, willing and able to acknowledge people when they're doing a good job.
Yeah, she's a superstar.
Doing a good job for.
Excellent. Okay, anybody else from the council got anything?
Joe, what are the areas, like, I know there have been some areas like up in Opa-locka that had, there were a few major areas, Pinecrest, Opa-locka era, area had water issues.
Yeah, I thought Miami Gardens.
Are they spending their money?
I don't know. I don't know what they're spending their money. I have no idea.
I mean, Homestead's the same. It's Homestead.
No, Homestead really has a lot of, I think Homestead's got their stuff under.
But on the Redlands, or that's unincorporated.
That's unincorporated, but.
But is Dade County taking their five hundred twenty seven?
They don't, I don't think they know what they're doing.
They haven't even started talking.
They haven't even started. I, I think our hope would be that they, maybe we start to talk about water and sewer. I mean, sewer conversion from septic to sewer, right? I mean, I think that has to be done and, and, and I think it's a huge number. And they would be, they would be well-served if they took their money and put it towards that. I don't know what else they're gonna put it to. Maybe mega train, train.
Mega train?
Mega train.
Well, do they have a lot of debt from COVID? Or they got that reimbursed?
Gosh, they, you know, they probably have a lot of debt from COVID. That's a big county's government's a big government, right? I mean, who knows what, what's out there? So they're gonna have to debate that. I, and, and you know, I, certainly, we know, I have an opinion where they should put their money. And it's not where you might think.
They should really be, I'm, I'm, and some of the speakers mentioned, they should really be grateful. They should really do us a solid with some of the things that you're asking the commissioner. Because we just put in twelve million dollars, really of their life safety, the hydrants and the water. I mean, that's a big, big thing. They should really be thankful. Because we could have spent that money in a few different ways. We could have.
Yeah, I have.
I mean, we could have put it into sewer ourselves, could have, you know, there, you could give it away to businesses, stimulus checks. I mean, there were other ways of doing it. This obviously was the most logical and prudent thing to do, but.
But we have done that too.
Really, really be thankful. I mean, we should get a big thank you note from them.
Well, I, I think, I think, I have no doubt that the relationship between Pinecrest and the county is off on a much better place with all the new county commissioners that are there, that are of a different generation, that have fresh ideas. I think they are willing to work with not only Pinecrest, but the cities. Look, I mean, it wasn't too long ago when Pinecrest would go there and they say, oh, you guys are rich, guys, go away, we're not gonna help you with anything. And that attitude, I think, is, is largely gone with a lot of these new elected officials at the county, particularly in our. So I think, I'm, I'm excited by, we have, we were looking at this thing for a while and hoping that when this new group came in, we would be able to impact the water system, our, 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 I guess, our long-term plan was to do that in a couple of years. We got, you know, fortunate with this money. But now we move on to the sewer system. So, you know, I think the plan is still the same. Now it's just not water, it's sewer. And I have no doubt that we'll, that, you know, really in the next two to four years, we will see some po- real positive movement on those types of things, which I don't think you, if you bet ten years ago, you'd ever see.
I would like to say too on that, that all the rich people. But I can just tell you, and the, the funds that just in the six thousand households give not only to the school board, which, Anna, you may know that number, it's gotta be fifty, I've kinda calculated, it's gotta be fifty million a year, just Pinecrest gives. Fifty million a year. What is it, forty s, and a forty something, forty percent for private schools? Fire department's eleven million dollars, folks. Over eleven million dollars we give for them to run eleven hundred calls in our community. I don't think we had but a couple fires last year. It's all rescue calls. So that, add that times eleven, divide eleven hundred into eleven million. So.
I don't mind being a donor, that's part of.
Well, I know, so this, this idea that, oh, Pinecrest, rich people, you just pay your own ways, that's just, I don't like to hear that because we, there's a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of tax money that goes to a lot of different entities throughout this community because we sell four, five, six million dollar homes.
I think they, I think they get it at the county now. And I don't think they did with the last group.
Yeah.
The proof was in the pudding. They didn't because we didn't get it.
Yeah.
There, there weren't.
Well, that's why I would hope.
There was no ball.
That's why I'm hoping, Joe, when you go and the commissioner is asking for that waiver to go another ten years, that they really step up to the plate and do us a solid.
I have no question that they'll, they're, they're gonna help us out.
And we'll keep working with them because the great thing about local government is once you solve one big problem, another one is ready to be worked on. So tomorrow we'll start.
Thinking of more problems.
We'll start figuring out more solutions. So, you know, I have to say, I'm really proud of, proud of council and proud that we got here and proud that we did it. Yeah, this might be one of the best votes I've ever taken. So thank, thank you to everybody.
Yep, I agree.
Everybody on council who got us here, everybody on staff who got us here. Great day.
It doesn't happen by accident. Yossi, you got anything in your communicated counsel? Which I hope you don't.
No, I'm good.
You sure?
Perfect.
Keep our eyes shut.
Just, just real quick, Mayor, the, the manager alluded to it. Congratulations to you. On Thursday, you'll be sworn in as the president of the Miami-Dade County League of Cities.
Right?
I'm, I'm honored that you've asked me to swear you in and I'm looking forward to it. It'll be another big Pinecrest moment this week.
Oh, yeah.
Take pictures.
Anna's gonna, you're gonna introduce.
I'm, I, I have written the introduction, sitting on my, on my desktop, waiting to be read. And I assume we're gonna be taping this, Kito, so that we can play it for our community.
The swearing in?
Yes.
I believe the League of Cities is, is doing it on their YouTube channel.
At least the segment where, where Mayor Coradino becomes the president. So it's, it's a great moment for Pinecrest.
And all the, all the fireworks that will occur and champagne.
It's, it's, it's appropriate.
Drinking a Bud Light in his honor.
No, no, Bud Light.
This, this is a maker's mark moment, though. I put the Bud Light away for the.
It truly is.
Is there gonna be a free drink?
At home, whatever's in your cupboard.
Yeah, remember the good old days when we used to go to those things and meet and have the dinner once a month?
It is at eleven AM, right?
Yeah, yeah, right, that's. Mitch, you got anything for us?
No, I'm waving in support.
Okay, thank you. All right, guys, great work. Never been prouder. So Shannon?
Oh, motion to adjourn.